Well, folks, it is six o'clock and it is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. We are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. Hallett will start with roll call. Bob Gates?
Here.
Steven Badger?
Here.
Kathy Cobb?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Tony McFaul?
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Tonight, we have several special presentations and we'll start with the swearing in of our newest Platteville police officer.
Glasses on. Right, I'm pleased to introduce our newest officer, Ava Jordan. Earlier this month, Ava completed the police academy at Western Wisconsin Technical College up in Sparta, which was a total of 720 hours of preparation to be a police officer here in the city of Platteville. Ava graduated from the University of Dubuque in April with two majors, one in criminal justice and also sociology where she earned high honors. During her time in Dubuque, she worked several jobs, often at the same time, including for the Dubuque Police Department as a community resource intern. Ava graduated high school from Curtis High School in Staten Island, New York City, New York, where she was born and raised. So not our typical route here from a Platteville police officer, but either way, we are very excited to have Ava Jordan as our newest police officer here in the city of Platteville.
Ava, move up to the.
As a police officer, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best my.
Faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ava, Ava, we generally give you a few, a few seconds or minutes to say, to say anything you'd like to say.
Thank you.
So just move close enough to the microphone.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. I'm really grateful for this opportunity to serve the city of Platteville and I'm super thankful for my department in taking a chance in me and I am really excited to start this career and have it be a long one with the city of Platteville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to our second special presentation. This is tax increment finance, pay as you go. An explanation by our Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation Executive Director, Abby Haas.
Get clicked up here. As Barb introduced, I am Abby Haas with Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation here to present on the pay as you go formula, which is a tool, it's an incentive for developers that we traditionally have not used here in Platteville in the past. There's been a few instances, I think, but it hasn't been a regular part of our toolbox. So just introducing it to you guys, we would like to make it a part of our toolbox moving forward. So what is pay as you go? Pay as you go TID incentive works like a rebate to developers. After they invest in Platteville, the city gives back a portion of the property taxes they pay to help them recover some of their costs. This rate can be adjusted depending upon a number of factors, including the cost of development, property tax revenue generated, years left of TID, amount of infrastructure, size of lot, et cetera. The incentive range we recommend is 50 to 100%. So I'm going to go over a scenario that shows you a lot of numbers here, so I just want to break that down ahead of time. So the properties I'm thinking of right now in this scenario are the land that the city has already purchased and is ready for development, say up in TID number nine in the industrial park, okay? So right now, we own a five acre parcel out there. Pick any parcel you want. And we have zero dollars in property taxes because it is a city owned property. If a developer approaches me and says they are going to spend $5 million on construction and then probably be assessed at then $3 million. And we approve the project as the city of Platteville and as Pedic and everything goes according to plan. The city can work with them to do a pay as you go incentive. So in this scenario that I am breaking down, you will see that the rates change year by year. That is not necessary. You can keep it a flat rate year after year, so you can come in and say it's 70% for 10 years. Lately, a lot of developers have been trying to get more of that upfront costs and do a higher incentive in the earlier years. So you will see in the scenario I'm presenting that we are offering 90% year, 90% rebate in years one and two, dropping down to 80% for years three through seven. Then years eight through 12, we decrease to 70% with years 13 and after at a rate of 50%. Also, the rebate can have a maximum amount set and it can only be applied towards eligible expenses. Most cases, those include fiber internet to site, pre-treatment facility, gas to site, city water and sewer to site, stormwater, curb and street, environmental remediation, site prep, engineering, surveying, architectural, soil studies, environmental studies, geotechnical work. It's a very extensive list. If you guys would like a full one, it's in-state statute, but I can get that for you. So this is the formula that I was kind of talking about here. So you can see, oh, sorry, this is 10 acres, apology. Construction cost is still the same oversight on my part. So you have your construction cost of 5 million, you have your assessed value starting out at 3 million. You will notice that every five years I do bump up that assessed value by 3% just to kind of keep up with reassessments and things like that. The value tends to raise on these properties. We are using a stagnant mill rate here just because I cannot predict the mill rate. So this is our current mill rate. I'm going to be using that in this scenario for the formula. And then you can see the years left of the TID and then you'll see where the incentive changes. So the important columns are the last two, the developer rebate and the city TIF revenue. Now, keep in mind, this site up until this point has been giving you $0 in revenue. So now you will see with the developer rebate and $3 million assessed value that we're doing that 90% in those first couple of years, so 42,000 approximately to the developer, just under 5,000 to the city. You'll see that then begin to fluctuate with it going down to 37,940, 38, almost 39,000, almost 10,000 and so on and so forth. Until you see at the bottom where you are then switching to the 50/50 where the developer and the city would be at that 50% rate. And then once the developer incentive is done for the pay go, then that entire $53,000 worth of property tax generated, while the TID is still active, it will go into the TID. But once the TID is over, say we complete and close a TID, then that would become standard property tax revenue. At the end of this scenario, you see that the developer has gotten a rebate of $581,359.82, while the city generated $368,283.23 in TIF revenue. Which is then explained in this first sentence again. I do want to just point out that, again, the property tax then would continue to be at roughly $50,000 a year. And while it's in the TID, TIF revenue does not affect the levy. It's when that TIG closes that then it would come back onto the normal property taxes. So adding pay as you go as a developer incentive allows the city to be more on par with other municipalities in the state that are already using it as a tool to attract developers. Some developers do prefer the step down formula that we had shown in the previous slide. Others do prefer the flat rate. They just want to be like, I want 70% for 10 years. Each scenario is going to be a little bit different. Each development is going to be different. Each set of needs is going to be a little different. We want to remain flexible and tailor the pay as you go to each developer's unique needs. The range in mind is that 50 to kind of 90%. And we also plan, you know, probably having a cap on that every time when we write a developer agreement. But this is just a tool to attract more developers. Wastewater is a huge demand these days with almost every development and having pay go as an option for them to kind of alleviate some of the costs they see with that, I think would be very beneficial for the city of Platteville. So Pedic does recommend utilizing pay as you go for future developments in the TIF district. Partnership with both the developer in the city will end up being a benefit to both. It's minimal city risk with high return potential. The framework Pedic has created will allow customized incentive packages to be created for each development situation. Is there any questions?
Have you, have you had any inquiries from a hiring as a, as a developer? If we have this? Would be interested in it.
So when we get to like the bid process with the development, we get, we found that we were outbid on a project recently because we didn't offer them pay go. So that's kind of where it stemmed from. It's hard when you respond to a bid. I literally have like two sentences, so I can just put pay as you go available now as an opportunity. Otherwise, we usually put land price formula applicable to get the land for a dollar.
Yes, I have a question, Abby. In the municipalities that have this, do the developers and the municipalities work out the details, like the percentages and the length of time?
Yeah, there's, like I said previously, it's a whole conversation and it's a sit down. It's not just like, well, we'll write you a check or anything like that. It's a pretty extensive process and it would be in the development agreement. There would be numerous meetings to get all the details ironed out. They would have to show what even would be their eligible costs. I can tell you AY McDonald is getting $50 million in pay as you go incentive over the next several years. For instance, that's, I just did the tour and they said that the other night there for the development there. But each, each scenario is going to be different. Some of our developers here in town, they want that 90% upfront. Other ones are like, no, we just want 50% for this many years until we recoup some of our investment.
Does it, does it start at the moment, sorry, at the beginning of construction? Or does it start at the completion of construction?
One more year later, did I say that right? Completion of construction and then it would hit the tax roll, so they would not risk. I'm looking at Nicola because this one always confuses me.
Yeah, so the, the incentive doesn't get paid to the developer until they start generating taxes in the TIF district. So the, the idea is that there's no, there's no exposure to the, to the TIF district or to the city ultimately from the pay go. So yeah, the, the assess, the assessment of the construction is effective in, as of the first of January of the year that the construction is completed. And then the, the first tax increment would be paid to the TIF district the year after. So, so technically the first year of payment would be after the first or the same year that the, the TIF gets its first increment payment from the development.
Just probably more for Nicola. At what point does our, does that increase our borrowable base for, for being able to borrow against?
Sure. So I'd answer that two ways and we have another expert in the, in the room as well in terms of Brian Raimer from Ellis. But, and so he can correct me if I get this wrong, but I would say that, that there's two answers to the question. One is if you were borrowing in the TIF itself, you could do a revenue bond or whether, or you could do a general obligation debt that was supported by TIF revenue. Okay, can you repeat the question? I've forgotten my second.
At what point does the, does the incremental value of the property increase our?
Ability to borrow. The first piece would be through the revenue stream, through a revenue note. The second piece would be not until the TIF closes. And when the TIF closes, like we just took closed TIF five, then all of that increased value in a TIF goes on to our tax roll and creates tax base. But that's usually 15 to 20 years after the TIF opens. Brian, did you want to add to that at all? Brian, you need to be in a microphone before we go.
Legally, the general obligation debt capacity is built off of TID in equalized value. So it would, once it's on, even in a TID, you get an increased geo borrowing capacity. But to Nicola's point, if you do have a revenue stream from the TID and it seems financially advantageous to do so, you could borrow on a revenue pledge, which doesn't count against your general obligation debt capacity. There's no limitation on how much revenue debt you have outstanding.
Any other questions of Abby? Okay, thank you. Okay, our next special presentation is the 2026 to 2030 financial management plan. And I think that would probably be Brian.
I can just go on this paper. Yeah, yeah, thank you though. Okay. As the city manager finishes handing those out, I'll just note the reason this is coming to hot off the presses is a future agenda item on the same agenda involving the borrowing, which we were able to then finalize, right? Your payments on that borrowing. So knowing that there's kind of a live adjustment that happened with that today, we couldn't really have this in its most final form until today. So, but the majority of this you see every year. So I'll jump right in. It, it obviously is kind of a thicker packet, but note, you do see this every year, so we'll try to get through it quickly. Just noting on the first slide where it says long range model goals. Understand that what we're trying to do is build a big picture for not only the current budget that you're exercising, but beyond that point. The reason being municipal budgeting often has a multi-year impact in terms of what you can and cannot do. The other thing is understanding the big picture, not only when we're coming to issue debt, but looking at your operational profile. Two things we want to accomplish. One, tax rate moderation, meaning that we, we're not going on kind of a tax rate roller coaster. We can control that each time we go out to issue debt, but certainly as you have increased operating needs year over year, whether it's inflation, adding officers, things like that. We want to make sure that we're kind of making those adjustments holistically and with the big picture in mind. So that's kind of the main goal that we're trying to achieve here. The other thing you'll note is not part of tonight's packet, but we also do this for the utilities as well in terms of managing the utility rates on a long range basis. But that's a future meeting that'll come first to the utility committee when we start going through the revenue bonding later in the year. So we'll flip to the first section. Your next page will kind of be the start of that section where it says historical trends, strengths, weaknesses, levy, et cetera. So on that first slide in that section, I'm on slide four and that title reads bond rating information. This just came out from Standard and Poor's, you know, about a week ago. They assigned a credit opinion where they affirmed your double A minus rating and had the outlook as stable. One of the, or several of the criterias that they go through are listed here. This is a screenshot of their rating report where they look at institutional framework, individual credit profile, economy, financial performance, reserves, management, debt and liabilities. One thing I really want to focus on is some of these are very controllable. Some of them are not primarily the one that's a little less controllable would be the economy one, right? You can't always control how much you grow each year. Obviously, things like the last presentation can help. But again, economic downturns are obvious macroeconomic elements can certainly be out of your control. You know, see 2008, COVID, other things like that, right? The city of Platteville and specifically like the council or other committee committees can't control macroeconomic events. So when I say some of those are out of your hands, that's what I mean. But certainly financial performance, reserves, management and debt, those are all within your control. All of those you do have strong or very strong. One thing on the debt and liabilities. This one went to their rating score of four, which is technically lower if you were to kind of do side by side. To last year's rating report is lower than last year's. The reason for that though, think you've had a couple of big legacy projects hit the books sequentially last year and this year in the fire station and then the aquatic center. So it stands to reason, right? Normally you're just kind of borrowing for roads and equipment needs. But in the last two years, you've had some big legacy projects. You're also not alone in this. So I would say while it's something that you can control, right? It's been something that's forthcoming in terms of the needs of the city and these legacy projects that we're executing. The other thing I'll mention is this is actually kind of a common score throughout the state. Just thinking about you're not the only one executing projects like this. And your non-legacy debt issuance policy really moderates this, right? You try not to issue more than you're actually amortizing in a year for your kind of non-legacy project. So in terms of that, I would just acknowledge, right? That you've been moderating that and not overspending, right? You kind of actually pull back on your CIP. So just wanted to point out some of the highlights there from the rating and those scores. On the next slide, which is some additional rating information continued. One of the main things, they always kind of release this in terms of things that can help and things that can hurt. These are the most important parts of that sixth page. You'll see this in the sale day report on that later agenda item. So I just kind of recommend reading through these. They are kind of the same markers that they have used in the past. One, again, that may not be totally in your control. They say, hey, keep growing the tax base and you know, things will look better. Improve, you know, income in the area, you know, things like that. Those aren't immediate things that you can always control. But certainly, the other thing is maintaining that strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity. That's what we're doing with this long range plan. They also state in the report, the fact that you have this plan augments, you know, your, your management score. So one of the weighted criteria there. And then in terms of things that could change the rating down is, you know, if you kind of start to use your reserves for projects more so than you have, that can be a sign of concern. So again, what we're trying to shoot for when we're looking big picture is keeping capacity to levy for capital projects. So you maintain cash to pay for some projects as well as, you know, obviously as these bigger projects come up, trying to say is it time to start moving other things as needed? So just note a lot of the ups and the potential downs. There is all kind of managed within this long range financial management plan. On the next page, financial, financial positives, excuse me. You're at about 29% of expenditures in terms of your fund balance, which is above your policy. This is something that we always measure and want you to maintain. Your policy kind of gives staff the direction each year, what they can and cannot do with any surplus, which helps kind of maintain that fiscal sustainability. Another thing in terms of net new construction did add a little bit of levy limit capacity. But I will say you'll kind of see on a later slide, it was less so than some of the previous years in terms of net new construction. But as we get into levy limits and how those work, we'll kind of explain that in more detail. On the next page, financial challenges. The, before I get to this, one thing I'll just note is if you have questions along the way, I prefer just to be interrupted. We can stay on topic that way. So if you have questions and I'm not looking up, just throw something at me or holler. Financial challenges, levy limits and net new construction. This is going to live in this document forever unless levy limits go away. But the fact is, is you can only increase your levy by whatever you did last year plus that percentage of net new construction. That is the highest budgetary constraint that, you know, the Wisconsin legislature imposes on local municipalities. So as to say, if you have a bad growth year, you have to make tough decisions budgetarily. And you know, even if you have a bad growth year, right? You have staff that, you know, of course, want to make a fair wage in return. And you provide multiple services to your constituents, including, you know, police, fire, the administrative services, et cetera. So the unfortunate truth is bad net new construction can compound on itself. It can be highly constraining. And one thing I'll just mention here, we looked at kind of a 17 year average for the city at about 1.4%. Grant County as a whole, which you are a part of, is about 1.3%. So while you may be having a bad year in, in some of this 17 year data, right? The county as a whole in general may be having similar issues and same goes for the state as well. You know, within that 17 year range, we do have two very significant economic downturns in that we're just development wasn't happening. General obligation borrowing capacity, to speak to your question earlier. Currently, you're at about 53% of your limit. That is typically where we see communities reside is, is kind of anywhere from that 40 to 70% range. Smaller communities obviously live in the higher end, right? They may just have roads that need replacing, but a small tax base. And that's what it's based off of its total equalized value. You get 5% of whatever your total equalized value is, is your general obligation debt capacity. And you're at 53% of that limit. So using about half of your borrowing capacity. On the next page, this is kind of a, just a chart to show the city's net new construction. In the orange line against that county net new construction. So one of the items in terms of that average, you are much higher. I would say though, that's fixated on some of the earlier years within that average as compared to the later years. Here, as you can kind of see, the county has outpaced, the county as a whole, meaning all the other municipalities in the county have been growing slightly faster than the city. The other thing that I mentioned though, when I said, when you have a bad net new construction year, it may not just be a city of Platteville problem. It could be kind of just regional problem. That can kind of show if you lead your eyes to the right hand side here, where you went down for your 2025 value, the county did as well, right? So almost in a linear fashion, kind of equal to what the cities decreases. However, the cities was slightly steeper. To kind of put the buying power of net new construction, so what do those percentages mean? On the next slide where it reads NNC, where I'm shorthanding net new construction and levy limit parameters. This is explaining kind of what each of those years percentages of net new construction mean for your allowable levy increase. So the past couple of years hovering around 1%, that meant about, you know, $37,000 to $45,000 that you could increase the city's levy for. And this is the biggest revenue source for a $9 million operation. And I think that should kind of show what, you know, kind of thinking about it. And I think that should kind of show what the, you know, kind of thinking about it. Um, if you were a nine million dollar business, right? And you're you're thinking about how do we raise our revenues in terms of, you know, our fees for our services and or, you know, the products that we sell. You know, a business operates much differently. They have to weigh, can we increase our fees and still have the same kind of customer base? Local governments operate much differently. However, you you don't have the, you know, ability to just always increase fees. The levy is kind of your highest priority. So this this should kind of explain when I said. Net new construction is is the highest limitation that the legislature imposes on local municipalities. This is kind of why. Um, you know, there's constant initiatives to continue to help local municipalities because you provide very essential services like. Police and fire that I mentioned earlier before. Um, and we've gotten a few uh. A few years of assistance, like with Act twelve and additional state aids and things like that. Um, however, it's still not enough. A lot of communities face, you know, the similar challenges of looking at. I can only increase my revenues by point three percent. How do I pay my police officers to stay here, right? And things like that, so. And again, while I'm focusing on police and fire, I'm not discounting any other, you know, functions of the local government. On the next slide, um one allowable increase as well, that's uh a little unique is. Um, tid five uh closure. Um, so you do get a levy bump as a result of closing a tax increment district. One of the reasons um for that is because generally the thought is we do have increased services. That are not allowed to be recouped with TIF dollars, meaning um you can't pay for additional fire EMS, things that are needed. Uh one, one of the greatest examples is I had this community that had their first kind of three story building or greater being built. And the TIF statute doesn't allow them to borrow for a fire truck, right? But they needed a ladder truck for the first time ever because of this new apartment being built. Um, so they had to go outside of the TIF to fund that, but obviously would have been tid eligible because it's directly related to what's happening in it. The same goes for your services. That's a capital equipment item, but I just kind of wanna uh help educate in terms of why the legislature allows for this levy bump. Um, it's because you can't fund a lot of the things that you have to increase in order to uh pay for the additional tax base. Um, there. So that total closure levy increase um gets to be fifty percent of the final increment value. And so that percentage uh was about three point four three percent that they allow you to increase last year's levy by. Um, so that's an additional hundred forty eight thousand. So while it was a bad net new construction year is kind of a good year to have this help. The twenty twenty six budget. The other thing that I'll mention here is it's automatic. Um, meaning it automatically goes on your levy limit worksheet and it's base building, meaning that it will collect future net new construction as well. Um, so very helpful um to the twenty twenty six budget in terms of uh that allowable increase. Then on the next slide, the levy valuation and tax rate history. Um, what we're looking at here is kind of your past four budgets uh to look at. Where the levy has been spent in terms of on the top half of this, that's the category where the levy dollars are going for the general fund debt service. Uh taxi historically, which has gone away, uh Brodsky Center and then uh the capital levy. Um, so that totals to your total levy and then we kind of show how the uh tax bill is built. So uh anybody's individual property is built off of tid out assessed value. And that's how the tax rate is determined. And then whatever your own individual assessed value is, is applied to that tax rate. Um, so we do have kind of a sample property value that we just started during this planning period. Uh in history of two hundred thousand dollars. And then as there's any sort of revaluation, there could be an increase in that assessed value. Um, so anytime that you see the property value increase, that's because of the revell. Um, that would have happened and that's happened kind of twice uh here. The main thing that we want to point out is um in general, the past, you know, three years that um. To change in total uh taxes on that sap- sample property. Uh has kind of gone up and down with a lot of stabilization uh over the past two years in terms of the tax change has been basically flat. I mean, three dollar change one year, uh negative six dollar change in the following year. So that should just kind of provide a history, but overall hovering around fifteen hundred dollars for that sample property at two hundred thousand dollar value. Jumping into the twenty twenty six budget. The first slide in that section uh is just kind of some context in terms of the levy components and how they operate within levy limits. Um, your general and operating funds, um there, you're allowed to levy for these, obviously, but they don't have any exemptions. So they are subject to levy limits. Um, there are rare occasions uh that you get some exemptions for certain uh special unique needs. Uh but for the most part, it's not like, hey, we're adding an officer and now we get to exempt, you know, that new salary cost and increase. Uh the levy by that, that that increase like that has to live within your last year's levy plus net new construction. Capital, uh same same theory applies in terms of the operating funds. However, it just tends to be the more movable object, right? It's much easier to move a project than it is to move a person. Uh so that's why we say it's the movable object. Um, generally, communities will find um some ways to use that by. You know, their allowable debt exemption um to help fund that if they decide to levy. Uh for the capital projects fund, we'll kind of get into that um in a future slide. And then general obligation debt service, while you're limited to how much principal you can have outstanding. Legally, you can claim whatever you need for an annual payment, meaning uh in the agenda item later, we could have structured a million dollar payment in year one. Not a very good idea in terms of your tax rate, right? Because that could spike the taxes. But legally, you can have an infinite amount of a debt payment in one year and exempt it from levy limits. Claim what you need um and levy for that. However, in order to kind of maintain the tax impact. Uh, communities obviously shy away from that, but it should be noted that you can exempt that on the levy limit worksheet and pay for what you need for debt service. Given the constraints within that new construction, understandably, you can see why communities do have to rely on debt heavily throughout the state. Um, for their capital projects, you do not have a lot of latitude to build cash to pay for projects. Some initial budget kind of takeaways on the next slide. Um, this is uh so I'm on slide fourteen where it says the initial budget full levy summary. Um, this is a comparison from the twenty twenty five budget to your initial twenty twenty six budget. One thing I want to mention, obviously, you have a future agenda item on, you know, going through the budget. So certainly, this can change. This is no- by no means uh s- static and uh in stone at this point. Uh but it certainly is updated with the events uh of of today in terms of the debt service levy. But in terms of changes by those categories, we just always kind of like to show uh the differences in in where you've been. Um, one thing, um, you know, as discussed is certainly that increase. In the levy provided by the tid closure is allowing for um the total levy to go up. Meaning we have the levy limit authority to do it in as well as you'll see on a later slide, impact to taxes right now that that's. Off of a tid in tax role and goes to tid out, it will help that tax rate. So uh we'll get into that in a second, but that's uh the primary reason outside of, right, the exemption for debt. You can levy what you need. Um, that is one of the reasons that, you know, while it was only the point three percent net new construction. We do have kind of the ability to levy for these increased changes. Next slide is know your allowable levy. This is us kind of taking a a look at uh the city's draft budget and analyzing it against your levy limits. Uh here, so I'd focus your eyes on the right hand most column in terms of the twenty twenty six budget. Your levy need based off this draft budget was uh five point seven six eight uh million. And then the levy limit, you have a base levy, meaning pre adjustment, pre you claim what you need for debt and anything else. Uh, you have a base levy of four point four million and then we're just using that line E, that debt adjustment. To claim to our levy need. Uh so you're not using your full uh debt adjustment here is the main takeaway. Uh that I want to get. So, right, we can meet the draft budget, can fit within levy limits. But the additional item would be at the bottom there, terms of additional line E capacity. You do have additional authority to increase that levy. It's not to say that we should, it's just to acknowledge that you can. Um, and again, the should should always be, how does that impact the tax bill, in my opinion? So, which we'll get to, obviously. So getting to that, the initial budget uh kind of tax impact, we did just recently get the published uh final statement of assessments. So uh these should be kind of the final total tid out assessed values uh that are here. The one thing that I would point out is, of course, the DOR still has one more Friday to make amendments. Uh so there's a chance uh that this changes. However, I wouldn't see that. Um, in terms of you don't have any uh from what we can see on the DOR's website, any outstanding changes um there forthcoming. Uh but this uh draft budget gets to a six dollar and fifty two cent uh tax rate. Uh so a nine cent increase to last year's tax rate of six dollars and forty three cents. Um, and that tax impact on that sample property is about uh the fifteen hundred fifty six dollars in terms of what the tax bill would be. Or a six dollar increase um for this property. So uh should be relatively uh level there. The one thing I would just acknowledge, it is going to be based off of individual assessment, um, right? So presumably, if you haven't added a sun deck or an addition to your house, should be relatively flat is the message here.
I can just interject and just point out to the council that this is just a preliminary figure based on some of the calculations from the. Um, the bid award today for the for the parma sorry note, but there will be some changes. And so this is not, you you may notice this is not reflective of the city manager budget that was presented. So, um, you know, just wanted to acknowledge those differences.
So I I would say kind of the takeaways and my our purpose of having this conversation here is just acknowledging. You do know your assessment um now while you're crunching numbers and continuing the budget process. So it's going to be much more manageable, as unfortunate as it is that we get these numbers late in October from the state. But now we can kind of move forward with a little more certainty as you make those changes. Update these numbers and kind of city staff has, you know, all of the data in front of them now. And so I would just say, as you're making these changes, uh as clear as you can be in terms of tax rate goals. Um, that can be the most helpful and that's always kind of our key takeaway is, you know, you can manage these items kind of up and down. One thing I'll acknowledge and go through later for the debt issuance is, you know, you got a premium bid. So you do have dollars that you can play with in terms of what you want uh the twenty twenty six uh debt payments to be. So I'll explain that when we get to the debt service. But in addition to that, uh Nicholas comment, right, you you have other adjustments you'll make. So I think, you know, clear direction on kind of your tax rate and tax bill goals. Um, you know, and just in general, right, there is an unavoidable additional debt point debt payment that does exist now. Uh with the twenty twenty five uh financing, but some navigation allowed in that. Um, that we can kind of continue to work with staff uh from your direction, from your conversations. So any questions on the twenty twenty six budget? Otherwise, I'll wrap this up on, you know, kind of the long range planning on the next couple of slides. Okay, um, so going into beyond the budget, uh we always have kind of the same budget tools. I I keep this in here because I, one, I don't want to keep go through this and read this off the slide. I just want to say these should be the things that to augment this financial planning process. If there's what if scenarios that you want to see in terms of new service initiatives or even decrease service levels. Uh, use use us as a resource to do that, you know, through staff, right? The so I just kind of want to always re- uh reiterate that as you'll kind of see what this tool does is project out the next five years beyond this budget. And so if you're kind of saying, hey, what if we do this? What if we don't do this? Um, those, this is the time uh to kind of do that. Um, so that's kind of why I keep this tools uh slide on there. Terms of the methodology building beyond the budget, um without any, you know, comments on what if scenarios. We generally follow a linear trend analysis to say of all of your line items in each budget. Let's categorize them together. Uh, for example, wages, right? We can take the salaries, you know, from each department and apply a linear trend uh there. So this slide is just simply stating what the linear trend we have used. This would be another point to kind of say, you know, hey, or are we due for a salary study or things like that? And do we want to kind of look at this model differently if we were to increase the wages? Um, or if we were to uh find ways to cut, you know, other costs in other categories. I just kind of wanted to mention that this is a linear trend that we're using. Um, so that you have an understanding on how the general fund kind of expenditures increase throughout each year. So then on the next slide, which is the projected levy, uh and we kept the budget in there just so you could kind of see. Uh, from the budget, where do we launch from from twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty one? Uh, the main thing that I'll point out here, that linear trend, as you can kind of see a quarter of the way down where it has the row that says change in levies. Kind of results in about a, you know, a nine to a six percent increase each year. The changing factor there would be when we're issuing debt and for how much within your capital improvement plan. And where the debt service goes. Um, so some of the earlier year increases are due to some of the newer. Debt service that is coming on the books from the twenty twenty five issuance and the twenty twenty four issuance from last year. Um, the rest of it, right, is just kind of that general linear trend on operating expenses are going to have an impact. Asking the general fund, right, for more levy uh each year in order to fund operations. The second part of this is that levy limit section, and that's to say, what if we use um in terms of the limit? We weigh these linear trends on operating expenses against a average in terms of net new construction. Uh, to say, you know, how does this impact levy limits? Can we fund um these operations at this linear trend against an assumption for net new construction? So for that, we use a point six assumption for the future beyond the twenty twenty six budget. So this is kind of a a fiscal exercise to almost stress test, right? Uh, the future to say, you know, how does this impact the city moving forward under levy limits? There, uh I would just say there's kind of a two year runway. That if we continue to uh use property tax revenues for the capital projects fund at a level amount of four hundred thousand dollars. We kind of have a runway of two years in which we can do that. Starting in twenty twenty nine, where you see those negative red numbers, we would have to, you know, we wouldn't have the levy limit authority at point six net new construction. With the linear trend and expenses to fit the capital projects levy in there. So it would go to say, right, we would have to reduce the property taxes to the capital projects fund by two hundred seventy thousand. The bigger concern, which I would say here's the financial stress test point, if we just have continued net new construction of point six percent. Uh, and the same linear trend in operating expenses, the fiscal cliff comes in three years, so budget year twenty thirty. Right, where even if I remove four hundred thousand of that capital projects levy, we're still seventy four thousand eight eighty short. Um, so hopefully that kind of makes sense. You know, we could obviously do three tables and three slides, so you could see all that. But we try to just kind of oversimplify it that if you just compare the red number to that capital projects or the property taxes for capital. Uh, you can kind of see that's our movable object, as we said earlier in the presentation. That's kind of where, you know, most communities at the end of the day make the tough decision if they are levying for capital. And that's going to be the easiest, you know, plug to unplug, if you will, uh there. So all other things being equal, kind of a in three budgets from now, you know, could be a tough decision. But that said, kind of good news, um if that net new construction remains flat at around. But that said, kind of good news, um, if that net new construction remains flat at around fif- uh, point six percent. You would have a couple of budgets to build up and make other decisions along the way. Then the rest of it is resulting tax impact. I think at the end of the, at the end of the day, we're projecting future values that are going to consistently change. It's it's kind of imperative to uh analyze that once you know future values, right? I can't predict what businesses are coming into town and your residential growth rate, things like that. So I would just kind of say the tax bill impact, in my opinion, is a little less important in this exercise and kind of more the levy limit. Uh, discussion isn't more imperative, but certainly here, the goal of this is to try to flatten this out as much as possible. The moving item is certainly the debt service impact as you borrow for projects, so. The next slide just kind of provides the summer or a summary of the assumptions used. So I'm not going to kind of walk through that. I did kind of state that as I was going through the tables. But in case you're looking at this later and you can't remember what numbers I said, I, we kind of kept that in the presentation, so. The other item is expenditure restraint. Um, so this um is going to change. Uh, it is, you have to meet a certain limit in terms of your general fund expenses. In order to qualify for a state aid payment, this is something that you're always kind of tweaking at the end. Um, and staff is kind of well aware of this limitation. And so you're kind of uh adjusting as much as possible. Once you get these numbers. Um, the one thing I will say is, um, certainly that net new construction being low this year, that point three percent that we talked about. The rule here is you only get sixty percent of that to allow your in your expenses to increase plus C P I. Um, so actually the C P I is two point seven percent. I apologize. I don't know why that says two point six, but you have point one greater on this slide. The the point was is, um, we've already been in discussions with staff and kind of where this needs to go, uh, so they have their eye on that. The other thing I'll mention is if you do find yourself in a year where you have a draft budget with additional capacity here. There is um kind of a contingency uh that we recommend communities adopt in terms of increasing their general fund expenses. With a contingency line item, and then you have kind of that contingency fund balance applied. So you're not increasing the levy to qualify and maximize your ceiling. It's just a mechanism to say, we want to qualify this to the highest authority we get to increase our floor for the next year. So when I speak to the benefit of multi-year planning under the state laws that we operate in, um, this would be one of the mechanisms. So we would get into that in more detail if that existed for the current budget. It does not. But uh, that said, it's always kind of, it should be known that that's kind of your wiggle room uh to maximize your qualification. The next uh two slides are speaking to fund balance. I'm not going to go through this in great detail because we we have this every year. I just want to mention that these are kind of our takeaway slides to understand why fund balance is important. We always know there's a question of why communities should just hold funds on hand. The most important thing to realize is you have unknown events that happen, you know, flooding, other things like that. That you want cash on hand, so you don't have to go borrow for emergency needs. Uh, the other thing is you have, you know, unknown events that can happen operationally as well in terms of staff adjustments, retirements. Or, you know, new hires, things like that. So the point uh of the next two slides is just to kind of explain uh the importance of fund balance, how that's categorized. And what those categories mean. Uh, it can be good to have this next to your audit. If you're trying to understand what your fund balance position is and what each category means. So I'm not going to read through that because that's super boring. Um, and then to look at the most important stuff is to say, where do we kind of sit? In terms of, um, you know, our fund balance, uh, historically, given the policy that you have. Uh, you maintain around your target minimum that S M P kind of directs. Uh, so I would lend your uh lead your eyes to the uh blue line and the light orange line. Um, the other thing that we have been seeing in terms of a trend is the S M P median has been quite high. And it's actually kind of growing. If I had another chart in terms of where that's been nationwide, it's actually higher than fifty one percent statewide. It's kind of held flat, but I would say this is one concern that we have for communities. That uh the rating agencies are kind of pushing for higher fund balance. Um, I find that, you know, kind of hard to stand behind just to say, well, we want to be rated like our peer group. So let's just keep holding all this cash when inflation situations are so high. And then certainly we have market events coming out of the COVID interest rate environment for tax exempt borrowers. Where you have rising interest rates, right? You kind of want to end your, you're earning money in terms of interest earnings on your cash. You know, it's hard to say, well, we're just going to keep all that, right? Because, you know, the peer median is is holding high. So until we start, if we see any rating actions going negative, um, we wouldn't make a change. I just kind of wanted to uh let you know that that is kind of one thing we've been noticing statewide is just been kind of like a growing median. And um, a lot of, a lot of people are holding more cash. Uh, one thing that I say may be part of that is obviously there's been a lot of federal funds received. That should start be being off the books with ARPA and things like that. Um, so I could see where maybe that's part of the reason. Uh, but the fact that it didn't change and grew in twenty twenty five was where we were like, yeah, this might be a concern. Because everybody should have spent their ARPA money uh by twenty twenty five, so. So final thoughts here, I've uh kind of gone through most of this. I think the biggest one would just be, right? You're using your liney adjustment when necessary for those capital projects uh for the capital projects levy, but that's going to be your movable object. So um, the rest of this, I've kind of uh stated that, um, but I would just kind of, again, the takeaway is. Do what you can uh to levy for capital projects while it's available. Uh, but if it starts becoming not available, that'll be your movable object, so. Then to move into capital planning, um, some of this we're going to go through in the debt uh issue. So I'm going to skip past this base case uh slide and go to the next one. Which is um, the capital improvement plan as a whole. And just kind of focus on the uh top two lines here. Um, so this is where, you know, in terms of future borrowings, um, what you're really looking at. In terms of the expectations to borrow in twenty six through twenty thirty, uh, that's in the orange. And then use of cash from the capital projects levy slash reserves um is the green line. So if you are levying for capital, right, at four hundred thousand dollars, there's the expectation as it stands, right? That you would use some of that cash, the difference between what's in green and the capital projects levy. And then I would say, right, there's always interest earnings uh that are kind of uh falling in there as well. Um, but that is to say, right, you do plan to use cash. You're not a hundred percent relying on debt is kind of the message here. The other thing is you're kind of staying within policy in terms of uh trying to only issue for what you're amortizing as you go. Um, so uh, that's, that's kind of the main message uh of this slide in terms of the highlighted uh lines there. And then relative to the capital improvement plan tax impact, so this is the levy just for debt service. And we build out, right, all five issues for the city twenty twenty six through twenty thirty. And then kind of show what is the tax impact. Um, and so this is the projected total debt service levy. This does not have the operating levy within it. The uh expected uh kind of tax rate on the debt service. And then the levy change, you know, over the prior year. That's the column that I want you to focus on is that third column where it says levy change from prior year. The goal here is as much as possible, uh, try to keep that as level um as possible. Some of this will change from debt issue to debt issue in terms of what premium you get. And all all those uh finonic fun items that I'll go into more detail on the twenty five borrowing. Uh, but for the most part, um, trying to keep as much capacity in the future. So those negative red numbers are what we're trying to keep so that as you issue debt in the future, you can keep this level. And then to fund all of those projects and all of the debt for the next five years of borrowing. Uh, this is inclusive of the twenty five borrowing as well. I should point that out. So this is funding the twenty five borrowing through the twenty thirty borrowing. So that's in total six borrowings. Um, that would cost that sample taxpayer about eight thousand dollars over um twenty five years. Then in terms of debt uh capacity, the left-hand side uh kind of shows the existing debt capacity. The one thing I'll note is obviously existing changed kind of as of today with the uh borrowing that happened. So that's kind of where the fifty three percent number comes in, where that lives in the proposed debt side right now. Because in theory, you guys haven't authorized it, so we did just kind of keep it in the proposed side for now. Um, but you're at fifty three percent of your statutory limit, so that five percent of E V. Fifty three percent means you do have an additional limit to borrow an additional twenty four point eight million. That's a limit, not a goal. Um, so where you sit is a healthy position. The other thing I'll mention is you self-limit in terms of you have a policy limit of three point five percent uh instead of five percent. Um, there, and at that limit, you're at seventy six percent of your policy limit with an additional eight point nine of borrowing capacity. Within that self-imposed limit. And then the last two slides that I'll go through is the TID cash flows. Um, so here you're looking at uh TID six, and we're just going to go through, see here. Six and seven, I know, uh, the others are relatively new. Um, so we've been kind of focusing on six and seven. Uh, here the past couple of years. Um, so looking at uh six. Um, that's kind of, it's needed, an extension uh is the message here to climb out of its uh hole. And it's expected to do so by twenty thirty one. So that's kind of the big takeaway um with TID six. Obviously, we continue to analyze where the values go within that district and the TID tax rates to derive the revenues. And then it's just paying off existing expenditures and kind of ongoing administration of the district. But the message here, it's going to take until about twenty thirty one to get out. And then for TID seven, um, we're looking at here is the uh district. Um, kind of similar, but it can do so within its maximum life without an extension. Uh, TID seven should kind of be able to pay off its project costs by twenty twenty nine. Meaning it'll derive enough uh cumulative fund balance to pay off any liabilities by that point in time. So that yellow highlighting there is the first year that that happens. Obviously, if there's improved uh values beyond the projections, um, that could be sooner. If there's any deterioration in the value, understand that TIF financing works off of uh with economic appreciation. So it's not just uh new rooftop value. It has, uh, it's on an equalized basis. So if there's economic depreciation within a tax increment district, that can move it down. So this is always a moving target, but all other things being equal, we project, you know, four more, five more years uh for TID number seven. So that concludes the financial management plan presentation.
That was a lot for.
Yep.
Some of us hear this, have heard this multiple times, but we have two members that probably have now heard it for the first time. So are probably wondering, uh, how long is this going to go on? Are there more pages?
Yeah.
Any questions right now of Brian? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, those are the three special presentations that we have. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have council minutes from uh October fourteenth and our special meeting on October fifteenth. Payment of bills. I have no appointments tonight to boards or commissions. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as are in your packet. And canceling our second metering meeting in December, which is December twenty third. Do I hear a motion?
Consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. That was Kathy seconded by Steve. Okay, and so Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Top?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions anyway, Annie. And I will call first on uh Carson Loshaw. Loshaw? Okay. Who's going to speak on affordable housing improvement programs, and I think you all got a um, a handout.
Yeah, thank you. Um, hello, I'm Carson Loshaw. You did read that, yeah.
No, you tell us where you live.
Oh, I thought you said you read that, sorry. Um, I live on one eighty five South Accra Street. Um, the apartment's near campus there, and I'm a student at U W Platteville. I'm a sophomore studying construction management. And I'm also on the volunteer fire department, so. Good, we'll see you. Chief Simmons here. Um, and today I just wanted to uh talk to you guys about the Affordable Home Improvement Assistance Program that I've been looking into. Um, thanks to Mr. Carroll for explaining that to me. Um, so looking into this, I've been looking into buying a home in U W Platteville. And trying to fix it up uh through this program. Um, and the opportunity has a lot of requirements, which. Um, uh, I meet most of. Um, but I wanted to talk today about uh the start of the program in twenty twenty. And how much the uh value of homes has increased in the past five years. I have some uh statistics here, including the house I've been looking at, which incre- has increased forty seven point seven percent. In the fa- past five years, as well as um many statistics uh about. The increase nationwide as well as Wisconsin, um, from valuable sources, including um the National Association of Home Builders. And uh, the Federal Housing Finance Agency as well as Zillow. I don't know how credible they are, but they seem to know what they're doing. Um, I also have on the second page here, um, the assessment values of the house I've been looking at. Um, which was in twenty twenty assessed at a total value of a hundred and seven thousand. And now in twenty twenty five, it is a hundred assessed at a hundred and fifty eight thousand. Um, as well as below that, I found on Platteville website that this program was approved in twenty twenty. Um, so today, I guess I just wanted to bring attention to uh the fact that this opportunity. Um, obviously, there's a lot of benefits for people who want to buy homes in Platteville and for the city. And uh, I guess, ask about potentially review on the values of requirements. Such as the uh hundred fifty thousand dollar uh eligibility uh cap on the assessed value of properties. Um, I would also like to thank um Mr. Badger for communicating with me and explaining how these meetings work. As well as Mrs. Stefan and uh Mr. Carroll, as I said. So, yeah, any questions?
Okay, so you, your third page is really what you want the council or staff or somebody to look at. The fact that in uh twenty twenty, when we implemented this program, we talked about it being houses. That were assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand or less as part of eligibility. And then um, in no interest loan, up to twenty five thousand dollars. And then up to, and you talk about a potential increase due to inflation on the ten thousand dollar match, the grant program. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. I don't know the exact numbers or percentages on these things. I'm sure you guys have a finger on all that. So I don't know what um a change would look like in these programs, but I just wanted to draw attention to that, especially the. Um, max assessed eligibility value.
And Joe, you're aware of this? Would this come to plan commission or would this?
The plan commission was not directly involved in uh creating that program, so I don't think it would have to go to them.
So was it a, you know, some of us can't remember.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Was a council?
Council, correct. So it just a, a little history. So this program came to be when we closed TID four. You know, state law allows us to take one additional year of increment and take that money and use it for affordable housing purposes. So we used it to come up with this program. And that's essentially where the 150,000 maximum came from. We were trying to make sure we fell under that affordable guideline. So I just looked at other state, federal programs, housing programs, and what they considered for our area to be affordable for those programs. So that's basically where the 150,000 value came from. But I'm sure we're all aware, housing values have increased significantly since then. So I think we would be on pretty safe ground if we wanted to take a look at adjusting that maximum limit.
Well, I guess we will take this under consideration. And thank you for bringing it to the council and to our attention. Does anybody here have questions of Carv? Or otherwise, we'll, we'll take a look at what that might be. I think one of our, one of our challenges is always funding programs like this. And so we'll have to, we'll have to look at revenue sources at the same time. Joe, my recollection is this also had something, didn't this also have something to do with our, or maybe it didn't, maybe that was another program we had on houses built between, before 1950?
That's also one of the criteria.
Yeah. So actually, this, some of this stemmed out of our housing study that was done. And then going on from that housing study and looking at some of the things that were identified in the housing study.
Correct, right.
So, all right, well, we'll look at revisiting that, and thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much for putting this together.
And thank you for listening to the financial management plan presentation.
Yeah.
I'm sure that when you signed up for this, no one said you were going to have about 45 minutes of financial planning in your, in your life.
Yeah.
You watched a YouTube video, huh? Okay, all right.
Honest man.
Yeah, an honest man. Well, I, I would like to acknowledge tonight that we are missing the seventh person of our council. And I know that we, there has been an announcement that Ken has retired. And, and we certainly value the number of years he gave to the city. And I suspect if I ask any department head, they would say that they had worked with Ken on their particular board commission or committee. He served on every one that's, that currently exists, plus a number that no longer exist. Because, believe it or not, guys, we used to have about twice as many committees as we have now. And, and sometimes we think we still have too many. So Ken did an extraordinary job for the city over his 30-plus years of service. We will miss him. We wish him the best. And in terms of wishing him the best, there is a retirement recognition activity event this Sunday, this Sunday, this coming Sunday, that would be November 2nd. It is at First English Lutheran Church, and it is from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. My understanding is it's kind of a come-and-go reception kind of thing with no planned time for a program. So I encourage you to stop in and wish Ken well, as he continues, I'm sure, to do the things that make, that he has done. I believe that we will continue to see Ken involved in historic restoration and preservation. I believe that we'll continue to see him talk to us about city livability in terms of green spaces and trees and storm sewers and those kinds of things. And we encourage that. So again, our congratulations to Ken and our best wishes to him as we go forward. And we will put out an announcement, Ken served in District 4. So we will be putting out an announcement about filling that vacancy. A part of that announcement will be a very clear picture of the area in which the person has to reside. Because unlike the, the position that we just filled when Steve joined the council, which was at large, meaning anywhere in the city, this person will have to live in a specific area within the city. So we'll, we'll get that out and develop a timeline and move forward. Anybody else want to say anything there?
I just want to say, I know that Ken will be missed. He, um, he was a chore to work with and he, a wealth of knowledge. And so he, I know he'll be missed. I kind of feel that he'll just come up here just to do some citizen comments on Jenna Tower soon.
Very good.
He'll be missed.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, Howard, I understand you have an announcement you want to make.
Yes, thank you very much. Starting tomorrow through Friday, the City of Plattville and UW-Plattville will be hosting over 200 public works professionals. The Wisconsin chapter of the American Public Works Association will be holding its fall conference here with lots of educational events and a lot of other things, including tours of our brand-new fire station that's going up. So hopefully, you will see some of our other folks. One of the highlights tomorrow is we're going to do a truck or truck-and-treat event up in the Broski parking lot, where we will have public works trucks and other public works people giving out candy and allowing children to see and touch some of our public works equipment. Hopefully, you know, generate some excitement for future public works professionals.
And Howard, how has that been publicized?
It's been on our website and different things of that nature. So, yeah.
Okay, good.
You know if it went through the school system?
I'm not familiar how that ended up, but yeah, we've put it out as much as we can.
Okay, anybody else with any announcements?
Just a quick announcement on the treat bags that you have in front of you this evening is a gift from our dear friend Tom Knoll, a former council member. He wanted to wish everyone a happy Halloween and to thank you for your continued service. So a gift from Tom.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no other citizens' comments or observations, we'll move on to reports. The reports in your packet were the Plan Commission. I have nothing to add. Bob, anything?
Nothing to add.
Library Board, Lynn?
I have nothing to add.
Airport Commission. And Community Safe Routes. Steve, did you make?
I did.
Yeah.
And I don't know that I have anything additional to add.
Okay, then we'll move on to the first of our action items, which is Resolution 25-15, authorizing the issuance and sale of $8.424 million in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A. Brian?
So I'll just introduce, introduce this agenda item while Brian is handing out our sale day report. Just to refresh the council that this is our 2025 general obligation debt issue. This funds the CIP projects, as well as the pool project, for a total initial estimate of $8,240,000. But as Brian will explain, that size has been able to be downsized a little bit based on the bids that were received this morning. And so this agenda item is for the council to consider and award the, the sale of this promissory notes to the lowest bidder.
Thank you. So I just handed out the sale day report. Again, this happened this morning, we took bids, so this comes kind of live. And it, it does change from kind of the draft, right? Resolution that you get from bond councils. So if you open it to the first page where it says competitive sale results, the first part, purpose, just kind of restates what Nicola stated. You did get a rating on it with the underlying rating of double A minus. The one thing I'll say is the underwriter took insurance, so they augmented the rating for themselves there to double A. I already went through a lot of the rating items, so I'm not going to repeat that from the financial management plan. It did receive five bids, which is very good. We usually want to see three bids at minimum. This has been pretty typical for the city to receive more than three bids. The low bidder was Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The high to low kind of, this should highlight the importance of going to a competitive sale instead of just working with one underwriter to negotiate. It's hard to prove to your constituents that you got the best deal on that day because the low bid was 3.82% total interest cost. And then the high bid was 3.93%. So that represents, right, about a .11 difference. On the $8.1 million, that represents about 170,000 of savings throughout the life of the debt. So again, not going to a competitive sale, hard to know whether or not you're receiving the best offer. Going to competitive sale, everybody's putting their best foot forward, and Baird won it today. The summary of results, that little table I'll kind of go through later. And then one of the items that I'll just mention here, the notes are callable, meaning they can be prepaid either out of cash or refinance on a tax-exempt basis, starting anytime after March 1st, 2034, meaning any of your payments, March, any of the maturities, March 1st, 2035 or thereafter, could be prepaid. And then, as Nicola mentioned, it was downsized by about 100,000 and change to 8.125. The time that you expect to receive the money is November 13th, 2025. Hopefully, somebody picks up the phone that day. Then common council action, we do recommend that you adopt the sale awarding. I will just say, make the note that it is 8.125 million for the general obligation promissory notes. And before you get to that, I'm just going to quickly explain what the tables are. So next page is the bid tab. That's if you're interested to see what everybody's bid was between those five bids. The first bid has Baird's. And then they, they run as a syndicate, so they include all of these other banks and securities outfits. So if you're curious on all that, that's what the first page is. Second page is everybody else's bid, so you can just kind of see this generated, you know, interest outside of Wisconsin, as it typically does. And given the size of the offering, that's pretty typical as well. The next page where it's Table 1, that'll explain kind of how we got from the original sizing of 8.24 million, when you authorized the sale about a month ago or so, to the 8.125. So a couple, a couple of changes would be, obviously, the project's cost didn't change, but the premium was offered. So essentially, you're offered cash upfront for higher coupons or actual interest rates on it, but that cash upfront is considered into the total interest cost price because you can downsize it and use additional dollars into the debt service fund. So you received $600,000 upfront, and you have to deposit under law a portion of that to the debt service fund. So that's the $474,000 number, about midway through that page, almost in the exact middle. You're depositing that into the debt service fund. You can choose to amortize that over the next three years on interest payments only. The one thing I'll say there, when I mentioned during the financial management plan that, you know, your 2026 payment can be a movable target. You know, we always work with Nicola, kind of after you're adopting the budget, when we issue debt like this and do receive a premium, to say, all right, now we have our operating side. What, what do we want for our actual debt service payment? We're looking at the total impact on the 2026 payment in terms of total tax rate. But then we, we don't want to make the next payment very large then as well. So it's kind of a balancing act that we work with staff on. So I just, that's what I wanted to explain. Why I said that is because of the premium offering. Cost of issuance basically came in as-is outside of the bond insurance that they offer. The one interesting point there is they end up paying for that in the premium offering. So it's an added expense, and then they pay for it through the premium. That is very common. So when it says paid by an underwriter, it's an added expense. But then again, they gave you the cash upfront, and they can do that in the bid process, but a little confusing there. But that was the majority of the increase in the cost of issuance there. The rest of them, we know our fees, you know, in terms of the other parties, we're estimating. You can see some of those went down. The underwriters discount, if you're curious on that, they, they have a takedown for holding the bonds for a period of time before they go sell it on the secondary market, or excuse me, I should say notes, before they go sell that on the secondary market. Outside of that, you have estimated interest earnings, and that's how we get to the 8.125 paramount. Next page, Table 2, is just amortizing that by purpose. So you can kind of see the streets, the aquatic center, and the equipment. The main thing that I want to point out here is the equipment, we try to amortize fast, right? Because that has a less service life as compared to streets and the aquatic center. The rest of the strategy in terms of structure, I'll explain on the following table. But before we get there, the biggest note I'll point out is in terms of our pre-sale estimate, which is of course, kind of current market conditions and trends at the time of pre-sale, plus a little conservative buffer. There was a drop in the market pretty much right after the pre-sale report. And so you did see lower interest costs than we had projected. And then with that premium, obviously, the interest costs kind of bumped back up, but you get that cash discount, so the drop of the 115,000 and the 474,000 to the deposit to debt service. So if I can lead your eyes to the bottom right corner, you can see from our pre-sale estimate, today's events, you saved $255,000 on total payments there. So again, that's us trying to guess what will happen with the market. We do have a conservative buffer, but there was a drop that, you know, again, wasn't anticipated in the magnitude that it happened. So benefit to sell. The other thing today, the other thing that I'll mention is, if you do recall, there was a consideration to borrow for the streets portion earlier in the summer. I did kind of evaluate with staff today what the difference was there. And that was about a 50 basis point drop. So the markets kind of come way back down from where it was in spring and over the summer. On that portion alone, that saved an additional $100,000. So I think it was a good idea to kind of hold off on the streets portion and wait for your aquatic center bid and do all one financing at once is kind of the message there. So. Next page, Table 3, is kind of a total impact. I would just say, this is looking at only the 2025 notes here. And basically, we're able to fit this in in terms of your existing debt service profile with a few years, and I'm kind of taking you to the second rightmost column where it says annual taxes change from prior year. This will only change the current kind of debt service taxes by about $13. The first year, 20 bucks, or $19. The second year, $18. The third year, $6. Then the rest of it is all decreased. And again, that's us trying to structure this appropriately for future borrowings, as we talked about in the earlier presentation. And then in total, kind of the total cost for this offering alone, right? I said for the next six years of borrowings, it was like $8,000 from our first presentation just for this borrowing alone, so paying for the aquatic center, the streets and equipment, $2,000, $2,080 to a sample taxpayer. From the pre-sale estimate, right? Because we got lower payments, about a $50 change over the life of the loan. Next page is just the general obligation debt capacity. We kind of went over that in terms of where you'll be with that. So I'd just say, kind of pay attention in terms of future borrowings, where, where you go. We kind of already talked about the residual capacity. You're going to gain that back as you amortize the debt, so I'm not going to waste your time and go over that again. But that's only showing the 25 borrowing. And then the last couple of pages is probably the best sleeping material you could ask for. If you want to read through the full rating report, that helps. Um, if you want to read through the full rating report, uh, that helps me fall asleep uh after my drive back home, so highly recommended, but that that'll give you the full details, though, of the credit opinion from Standard and Poor's. Um, certainly for the newer council members, I I highly recommend uh thorough review of that, there are way more tables in terms of their opinion, and they'll show kind of the medians, uh, key credit metrics, things like that, um, but they're kind of status quo, if you will, outside of, as I mentioned, increased debt levels due to consecutive years of legacy projects being accomplished, so with that, I can kind of pause there and take any questions. And then if you do move forward with the authorizing resolution, I do kind of need to walk out with um some signatures, so. Ian, you got, all right, you're already ready on that, thank you.
Okay, questions of Brian. This is for debt for projects that we uh currently have underway, or perhaps have even had completed uh, in terms of uh Camp Street and Seventh Street. I don't know where we are with the dump trucks and the dump truck chassis, if we have those, if they're under order or what.
Some of them are uh, some of them are still coming.
Some of them are still coming, and then we know that uh we've pretty much completed stage one and we're into stage two of the pool. So a total uh borrow uh resolution twenty five dash fifteen would authorize the issuance and sale of eight point one two five million dollars in general obligation promissory notes. This would be series twenty twenty five A. Questions? Are we ready to take action?
I move to adopt resolution twenty five fifteen, authorizing the sale of eight million one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of general obligation promissory notes, series twenty twenty five A.
All right, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Lynn, in case you didn't hear her. At the table, uh, so we'll vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Heret? McFall?
Yes.
Doss? Motion carries. We had to take time out for a little signature, but I think we're ready to, you're almost ready. Do you need, do you need a copy of that or anything? Just didn't want to.
There you go.
All right, thank you, Brian, and have a safe trip back to uh Wisconsin's east coast, you know, you're leaving Wisconsin's wonderful west coast. Okay, uh, we'll move now to item B on our uh agenda. Uh, twenty twenty six council budget adjustments.
Thank you, so um we are probably about two thirds to three quarters of the way through the budget process. And back on September the twenty third, City Manager Landwip presented the draft twenty twenty six CIP budget. Uh, and on October fourteenth, he presented the City Manager Draft Operating Budget to the council. And then uh both of those budgets were discussed um by the council at those meetings and at a special budget review session, which took place on October the fifteenth. From those discussions, staff uh drew what appeared to be council consensus to change two items that were in the City Manager Recommended Budgets. The first one was from the operating budget, the senior center membership fee. So the City Manager Budget included a recommendation for implementing a membership fee uh for the senior center with both a resident and non-resident fee as well as a scholarship availability for uh attendees of the senior center who may um, have difficulty with a membership fee. And uh from council discussion at the October fifteenth meeting, it appeared that there were three options that were discussed by the council. One was to remove the membership fee uh and corresponding revenue of four thousand dollars and increase tax levy support uh by that amount for the senior center, which would take the tax levy support from fifty five thousand five ninety eight to fifty nine thousand five ninety eight. The second option that was discussed was to lower the amount of the fee and then supplement the revenue support from the fee with increased tax levy support. And the third option that was discussed was uh to remove the membership fees, but then add activity fees uh and then supplement as needed the revenue from the se- uh activity fees with increased tax levy support in the amount of the difference between the two.
So that's, let's, one at a time.
Okay, so we will. So what, just to explain that staff are looking for um guidance through uh uh through action by the council uh on these items, so uh I've put a sample motion, but obviously, the the motion um and action would need to specify uh the, you know, the desired option or or one that's not listed, um, of course.
Okay, council discussion on senior center, Kathy, you serve on the Commission on Aging, so we'll hear from you first.
Um, of the three options, um, I want to question the third one. Um, remove the membership fees, add activity fees and supplement the revenue with increased tax levy support, it's my understanding that a lot of the activities that happen there are already, there's already a fee assessed for um, classes, I know the trips they take, um, so I'm I'm not sure what that would mean if we'd have to add activity fees, does that mean if you got a group that wants to come in and
Okay.
Hey, Uker?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, because we don't have anybody here that can speak to the senior center or the senior center budget. But I think that some of the activity, for instance, the bus trips are organized by the uh not-for-profit uh, Platteville area senior support. So the money goes to Platteville area senior support and pays for the trip. It doesn't come into any city account, as far as I know. Is that, I I think they run their own checking account, is that correct, or do you guys run their checking account, I don't know?
There's a pass account, um, there are such things as like luncheon lecture on the last Thursday of the month, there's a five dollar cost for some of those things to help uh supplement the cost of bringing in food and lunches, so it would be how we'd visualize it is in addition to other programming things, much like we do in the recreation department, if they're doing an activity, that there would be a fee associated with it to try to recoup some revenues to offset increased expenditures.
Now Lynn?
I was gonna ask Kathy if um the seniors were aware of uh what we're gonna move on and how they particularly felt about it, like, do they, do they even know that the, this is being brought up and discussed?
Yeah, Commission on Aging meeting yesterday, they're not happy.
The question, but that's not the question, the question was, were they aware of this before it was introduced in the budget? So this was news to them after it was proposed.
So.
Now heard about it since we heard about it, but not before we heard about it.
Kathy, I have a question about that, you said you meant with the Commission on Aging, but did you talk to the people who actually attended the activities at the senior center?
Um, well, I I didn't go to the senior center and talk to a group, but a number of the commission members attend the senior center events.
Well, did they have an idea what they wanted? Did they voice what what they wanted? Because I'm thinking if it's the money has got if it's gonna be offsetting whatever they would have to pay, and they are okay with paying it, then we should just okay it, but if they don't, at the end of the day, it's gonna, it's gonna be a problem, we don't, I I just don't want to step on the seniors' toes right now, so if we can figure out what it is they want, and if it's something feasible that we can apply to some city monies or however, I just think that would be an easy up, pleasant route to take, you know what I'm saying? So maybe we should find out what it is they, yeah, I know they're a hard group to please, but to find out what the base of them need or want before we move on it, I don't know, it's just you know, it's not like fixing a road, you know what I'm saying, this is
I think um, some of the direction might be um, for them to look, like, in the next few months at ways of increasing revenue, but idea of a membership fee they didn't care for that at all. Um, so of the
Since they didn't have any input when it was, before it was proposed. Right.
So I'm, I'm, I'm of the opinion with these three options to go with the first one, just to remove the fees um, and increase the tax levy support um, for twenty twenty six and give them time to
And, and make twenty twenty six. Some The time that they need to come
Yes.
Forward with the change. Others? Tony, any?
I'm, I'm fine with the first option recently, I think that's probably the best route.
That's fine, I I don't really have a problem also with having, um, I mean, if they're paying someone to teach a yoga class. Yoga class.
Well, they do.
For all those exercises?
Well, I don't know if they're all, I mean, I go to yoga, so I know that. So, but I, I think the difference here is in the amount the city is going to support, not in the amount that the, because I don't think their yoga fee comes into the city, it goes into the Platteville area senior support nonprofit.
Pay the people to teach the class.
Who pay the people or give people a stipend or whatever, I don't know about other classes, but I know that pass, that that not-for-profit does some work. So perhaps the first thing would be to have some kind of
Think it'd be good to have a dialogue.
Yeah.
Also, because if people are wanting to have more activities.
Right.
Something needs to be done.
Right. So Kathy, are you making a motion, we remove the fees and corresponding four thousand dollars of revenue and increase tax levy support for the senior center from fifty five five ninety eight to fifty nine five ninety eight for the twenty twenty six bud- budget? With the understanding that there will be a proposal during twenty twenty six that will address senior center expenses.
That is my motion.
Did you get that, Colette? That is her motion. Okay, so it's really uh the first bullet point with the added caveat that during twenty twenty six, there will be discussions in a plan that uh results in um a revenue, uh, perhaps a revenue stream that we don't currently see. Okay? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Kathy, a second, second by Steve, uh, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Heret?
Yes.
McFall? Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, going on to the museum.
So the uh City Manager Capital Improvement um draft budget uh included twenty thousand dollars of levy in twenty twenty six for Museum CIP uh with the understanding that that could be used either immediately or could be accumulated over several years to fund uh CIP projects at the museum. Council discussion was to replace that twenty thousand of CIP levy contribution with eighty five thousand for the attic insulation project at the Hammer Robbins Building. The options that were discussed are, as best staff could um compile them, were to fund the project with additional CIP tax levy of sixty five thousand, so thereby increasing the CIP tax levy from eight hundred and five thousand three hundred thirty dollars to eight hundred seventy thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, a second option was to increase the promissory note by eighty five thousand instead of increasing the tax levy. Um, and to reduce the tax levy from where it stood at eight hundred and five thousand by that twenty thousand down to seven hundred eighty five thousand. Or a third option was to replace um, a different CIP project that was included in the draft CIP budget with this project, so that it would be a uh potentially a roughly equal uh trade of one project for another, and that would then have a smaller impact on the CIP uh tax levy.
And that's kind of what we did last year when we replaced a sidewalk that was coming down from Fox, the Fox uh Bridge Estates and redirected that to the uh Aquatic Center. I've looked through the CIP and I would suggest that if we were to replace a different CIP pro- project with this budget, with this project, I would consider using the eighty one thousand dollars that is currently for a command car for the fire department delaying that to a different year. That's about, I think it was eighty one or something like that, it's about the same amount. I don't know if anybody else has looked at the budget, but that's what I, I kind of looked in the budget and said, where could we get about eighty thousand dollars? And that's, that's where I found we could get about eighty thousand dollars.
Increasing the, the twenty twenty six promissory note. What about that option as opposed to?
Well, I mean, you can always borrow more money.
Because I'm assuming that the reason that we were doing the, the uh fire department car is a need, right?
I didn't, I didn't see a justification, other than that that the car's been around and, I mean, and it's requiring more maintenance, but it's not.
You know, Tony had that um, the proposal of in- increasing the tax nominal increase. And was, was that, Tony, was that from the uh CIP tax levy or the promissory note? Or, I don't know if it would really matter.
From the promissory note, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I know it was for the full amount, not just the sixty five thousand either, so it'd probably be even smaller.
Oh, yeah, because it was for the three, three different projects. I thought that was a good idea.
So this would then fund, it would add sixty five to the uh CIP tax levy. Can we do that without affecting the um, the expenditure restraint program and other things?
Staff would request that we not split the funding of a project between levy and promissory note. That does make it very difficult to track if you're, if you're funding part of the CIP project, that one project with promissory note funding, and then you're putting up uh some tax, so if you if you were gonna do it, I would recommend putting the entire eighty five thousand on the promissory note, not sixty five thousand plus twenty thousand of levy, if that makes
So are you telling the, us that the twenty thousand dollar for the museum is currently funded from the promissory note?
What I'm, what, what I may not have explained well is that currently there is twenty thousand in the Museum CIP budget, so if if the, the, the council wanted to fund the Hanmer Robbins attic insulation and wanted to use promissory note proceeds to do so, I would recommend funding the entire attic insulation, not just sixty five thousand of it, so that would be eighty five thousand.
But I think that Tony just said bullet point one. Fund project with additional CIP tax levy, and didn't you just say the twenty thousand? Fund project with additional C I P tax levy and didn't you just say the twenty thousand was C I P tax levy?
I I misunderstood, I thought we were talking about adding it to a borrow, so.
No, I think he was talking about funding the project with C I P tax levy.
Yes.
Of an additional sixty.
Yes, so that would be sixty five in addition to the twenty thousand that's uh currently in the um museum budget for C I P.
And my question then was, does that do anything to? Any of the expenditure restraint program or anything else that we are trying to qualify for?
Well, yes, um it would increase the the portion of C I P levy um by that sixty five thousand. Uh uh it would. Uh we we talked about having to move some programs out of the general fund to qualify for expenditure restraint, so um. I believe that we would still qualify uh for expenditure restraint, but it would use up some more of that um capacity. It would use up some more of our um so so. I'm not sure how much you were able to follow in Brian's presentation, but essentially what he was saying is that we are rapidly. Eating up our debt service adjustment and so this would um because we would be increasing how much we would totally levy. We would thereby use more of our available debt service adjustment by sixty five thousand dollars. Um so yeah, so all of these things come into play.
That would be the case either um way, even if we did the entire eighty five out of the promissory note and move twenty thousand. From the C I P budget, it'd still have the same overall effect, right?
No, it wouldn't have the same effect, uh uh if if we borrowed the eighty five thousand. Um it would increase debt service on that and so then we would need to levy for the debt service, but it would be a small piece. Um but it would then then that would increase uh how much we're borrowing towards our total. Uh capacity against equalized value of five percent or three and a half percent of, you know, so um so we would have to think about that. Uh as council president said, you can always borrow more, but that is not always the answer to uh solving our financial constraints.
Kathy? I have a question, um. Cody, I'll direct this to you, the the twenty thousand that's in the in the C I P right now, what is that for?
I don't know.
So. So his request was for the attic and my proposal back to uh to Cody was that we were going to do allotments of twenty and twenty and twenty five as a way of. Being able to handle some C I P and working with other types of revenue sources and friends and such to try to um bring these other projects uh to light. Um it was also intended then to be a a non-lapsing type of a funds that could be added up and accumulated to tackle the projects.
So um. I've been thinking since we had our work session for the attic project, I know and we've heard that the museum has a. Big picture plan for um some major updating and additions. Where does attic insulation fall in that?
So uh there was a preservation plan done a few years back and one of the suggestions um. Is so the one of the biggest issues is the HVAC system within the museum is outdated. And it is not sufficient for the building itself. Um but the biggest requirement from the preservation uh assessment was that. Before you do any improvements to an HVAC system, you need to get that attic insulated. So th- this is a crucial piece to doing this process correctly.
Okay, so initially the, so we have the C I P que- request for twenty thousand, what is the cost for the attic?
Eighty five.
Eighty five?
Yep, so Shannon and I, um Shannon Botson and I, we applied for a grant through the uh N E H. And um we purposefully went with the highest bid that we could, right? We we had Delta Three come in, um we had the um Insta Foam uh insulators come in. And they are the ones who gave us that eighty thousand dollar number.
Okay, so. Uh I'm still a little bit questioning, so the thought was this is a priority project, but we'd get it done in four years if we. In the C I P, put twenty here this year and twenty the next. And we would be borrowing money and paying on money. To have it sit aside because we're not doing the project for a couple of years?
So my.
Yeah, is that? Am I thinking wrong with that? I mean, if we, but the idea was to borrow this year, the put the twenty thousand in for C I P. But it would sit there.
So my preferred is to get this done as soon as possible, so in the C I P that I asked for, I asked for the whole project. Um and then there was a suggested amount of twenty thousand to build up over time.
So yes, Kathy, I think what you're saying is uh if this project is gonna cost eighty thousand dollars and the council. Through its budgeting process in the C I P allocates twenty thousand dollars a year to the museum. That would mean yes, that the twenty would sit for the first year, the forty would sit for the second year, the sixty would sit for the third year. And we'd be into the fourth year and probably it would cost more than eighty thousand dollars. So the eighty would sit until the fifth year when there would be money for. Insulating the attic, which is one of the reasons, you know, I I I think we all talked about. Um you know, while uh an allocation by department may work. At the airport because they apply for airport improvement money and they can. You know, they're only gonna do an improvement every X number of years because how often do you need? I'm, I don't know how we can make that apply, I mean, that's a a a good question in terms of applying to. Uh the museum and also the library, I mean, we've talked about the library too.
Um if Madam President, if I could just.
Yep.
Uh um support your observation, which is exactly that, so we're going through budget, we know that we have a. Um immovable limit that is on the horizon, those are the red numbers that were in Brian's presentation, so we know that we're going to run out of. Debt service adjustment, um there's a lot of components that go into that, that some of which can be tweaked and and and. Hopefully flexed, um but some at some point uh we can anticipate that that's gonna happen, so in the meantime. As you mentioned, we have a few years that we can try to as best we can prepare for that. And and so staff bring forward suggestions as to ways in which we can try to mitigate um that that co- coming uh.
Cliff.
Cliff, I I don't like to use that word because that seems very uh dramatic, but uh but but it's out there, so we need to be thinking about it, um. Uh I also have heard uh the members of the council talk about, is it fair to ask for donors to put money towards? City infrastructure, um we don't ask them to donate towards roads or or water and sewer infrastructure, I accept through rates. But um but at the same time, you know, staff are trying to be innovative in how do we continue to. Support all of the services that we offer within the city while also being fiscally responsible and sustainable. Uh and so this is part of how we're doing that, perhaps a grant might become available in year two or three. And maybe what's been set aside by that time could help to to uh supplement the local match towards such a grant. Um perhaps a grant wouldn't become available, so we'd have to think about that, or perhaps it would be a combination of grant funding and donations and city levy. Um so so that's just putting forward the financial perspective on it.
I still say I don't know why we don't substitute. Uh.
How old is the car, Ryan, and what is the mileage?
So the current vehicle um was a, an initial initial request in two thousand fifteen. Which was then delayed five years to twenty twenty where the council gave us funds to outfit a hand-me-down replacement squad car. Um the vehicle has a hundred and almost a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it, um it was. Used hard as a police vehicle, um but we made it work for five years now, it'll be eleven years old next year. Um and it's just at the limits of its use. Um the, we don't um carry quite as much of the equipment we would on. With the newer, because the newer one's a little bit bigger vehicle, so it allows us to carry more equipment with it. Um obviously, our vehicles use different than a squad car, but it was a solution at the time.
Okay.
Um so.
So it's old with a lot of miles.
And s- and so, Ryan, how much of the eighty thousand dollars is for decorating the car?
Um graphics are like thirteen hundred dollars for graphics on it. And for us, it's reflectivity, it's visibility of the vehicle, you know, we're using them on highways at highway speeds for traffic direction and safety, so it's not just. Marketing of it, it it's truly for safety of the vehicle is to have those graphics on the vehicle.
What's your average mileage per year? If you've had it for five years and you tell me it's.
Uh the the PD replaces them around, I believe, a hundred thousand, you know, so.
You've put forty thousand all on it in five years.
Yeah.
So about eight thousand miles a year.
Sound like projects that need to be done.
Well, I my my concern about the museum is that the longer we delay, I mean. There's a twofold problem, I mean, it's, there's no insulation and that has something to do with deterioration of the uh collection. But even more so, I mean, how much more heat are we paying for every year and then, you know, the heater isn't that good.
Right, and they can't address the HVAC system before.
On the other hand, I'm I'm also a little worried about our debt limit and using up our debt. Th- the debt limit that we have, it wasn't, what what did he say, it was only like in three years. That we, three or five years that were in the red, twenty twenty-nine?
Yes, um but in the model that he presented, it was three years.
It was three years. So a- and this would eat up a little more of that in terms of. That much more money.
So if we left this the way it's currently in the C I P and do twenty thousand. For the museum for twenty twenty-six, like your original proposal. I could see this becoming a priority in twenty twenty-seven. As far as C I P. So I mean, it would be. The the I'm, I totally understand the need to get it done and I real- but I share Barb's comment about the. About the um limits that that we're getting to um as far as a command vehicle.
Eight thousand miles in a year.
But I I I feel that's necessary, I mean, for a vehicle that's. How old is it, ten, no?
Twenty fif- twenty fifteen, it'd be eleven years old.
Eleven years old. Um because it's all connected with. Emergency services. Um.
Start.
Yeah, and so. But my point is if if we don't, if we don't change a certain, the 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 makeup of what we're is being proposed already. Get, do the twenty thou- the twenty thousand C I P for the museum for twenty-six. And make the rest of that project a priority for twenty twenty-seven. Some of the other C I P things that are being taken care of this year. Will be behind us, not gonna be, we wouldn't be looking at adjusting the borrowing.
I I understand that, um but we do have lots of shelved C I P projects. I I'm thinking that uh the library's gonna come at us next year and say, you know, we need sixty five thousand dollars to replace carpet on floor one. So then we're gonna have, we're gonna be saying, is it sixty five thousand dollars for carpet for the library, which is only getting allocated? Twenty thousand or fi- I don't remember how much. Or or is it gonna be, are we gonna stick to our guns and give the sixty-five to the uh museum to finish their project? I, you know, uh it it becomes a real. Balancing act. And that, you know.
Wonder if we put off the museum now, we would just be borrowing more in twenty.
Then the museum will continue to rot.
Well, and then we'll continue to pay for heat.
Right.
And have a system.
But it's also not climate controlled, so the.
Yeah, the the system is is a, for lack of a better word, Cody, I've been in the furnace room, it's a mess.
It's a hot mess.
I'm not even, I mean, it's a mess.
Yeah. I I just think that uh what we don't wanna do is keep um. Playing Russian roulette with stuff that it could, if it gets. More, I don't know what it, how much worse it could get, it'll be more than eighty-five, right? Because then we lose the value of the the stuff that we have up there, which means we lose the value of the museum, which me, I mean. And even with the car scenario, I think we just. Man, I just, I don't know, I don't hold the purse strings, or do I? Um but I don't hold a purse string.
Ooh.
I do. I do. Well, I just don't want this to be something that if we keep delaying it. Um it goes from a small little hole in your mouth to a cavity and then you gotta, instead of paying sixty-five dollars to get the tooth pool, you gotta pay. Nine hundred dollars to get it pulled, I'm just going by memory. I just think we should work, if we got it now to borrow, if it's something that you, in your idea, um Clint, when you were thinking. To just only get them twenty thousand and then let the friends and family of the museum, I don't know how legal this is, but. Pay, we pay for it and then you could still do a fundraiser with the friends and family and let them pay the loan back. I just think right now is not the time to be saying, like the kids say, six, seven, six, seven, let's do it. Get it done and then put the money back, we do it all the time, we just, we can't be scared, we can't walk on eggshells with the purse string I'm holding. I'm just being honest, guys, I know, I'm sorry, I just.
You're fine.
Would hate for the museum, which is one of our big uh pools, to go bad because we. Were leery of spending the money.
One related issue, I believe, is the uh resolution of the uh of the roofing uh issue because uh. I- in in insulating that attic, we we have to also have airflow through there, which means. Um there needs to be some work done on the eaves and on the uh on the attic or on the uh on the peak. And so uh any damage that was caused by the hail needs to. Plays a factor in here.
I would just like to say that you all are doing a heck of a job, um basically, this is August and September for all these people, so. Um this, these are the conversations that we're that we're we're going through continually, you're in and you're out during the budget thing, so. Very good, keep it up.
Well, we've just come to so much resolution.
Right, I mean, I think if we have a museum, we have to take care of it.
Most definitely, most definitely, I feel like.
I know, it's going to increase the levy, I guess, limit a little, but I think we need to do it.
So you're you're looking at the second bullet point.
Well, which either one or two, whichever is, in your opinion, Nicola, the the best way to fund it.
The the one that has the least uh impact, I mean, I don't, the expenditure restraint program gives us how much money?
Uh approximately a hundred thousand, it varies from year to year.
Yeah, so we don't wanna lose a hundred thousand because we're borrowing eighty-five or sixty-five or another sixty-five, so we. We don't wanna cut, we don't wanna double the problem here. By losing money. So whichever way it can be, and I still favor replacing a C I P project.
But with the car?
Yeah, that's the only one I saw.
So then what will we do when his car blows up, when his engine blows?
Well, uh well, I don't know his engine's gonna blow.
No, um that would be a concern if you.
Oh.
I don't know, I'm just over dramatic. That would be a concern if you, I don't know, I'm just over dramatic, but.
We, we have been working towards, and you may remember seeing in the CIP budget, we have, uh, directors who are wanting to, uh, plan for those kinds of concerns in various departments. So they bring forward requests that some, something like a tar kettle may be working right now and it may work for another five years or it may, quote-unquote, blow up this summer, you know. So, uh, so one of the things that staff has done is to try to incorporate some contingency in our CIP budget. Um, we did part of that, uh, in, in an action where we evaluated how much sort of leftover in the CIP fund do we have? And let's put that aside, and we did that through council action, um, I think about a year ago now. And, and then we also, in the CIP budget, have begun to build in, um, a, a small amount of contingency. So, uh, in the, it's under the administration budget, but in twenty twenty-six, it's fifty thousand. So that's still in the budget right now. And so we hope to be able to increase that seventy-five thousand in twenty-seven, a hundred thousand in twenty-eight, um, and, and build up a pool so that if something doesn't get funded, it's shelved and then it, it fails, that we have somewhere we can go during the year to draw on to, to help us. Now, if everything fails at the same time, then obviously that, that contingency is not going to be enough. But we are trying to, that's one of the innovative ways we're trying to help with, uh, with our fiscal sustainability is to, rather than funding all of the what-if-it-breaks scenarios, we fund one pool, the, to, to provide a backstop for those situations.
And I know at one point, Clint, you were looking at the feasibility of, uh, adding a vehicle on the enterprise contract and what that might look like in turn, and I don't know what you ever found out.
And bring that number, but I was not happy with that number. And I'm still in a mindset and recommendation that for a majority, vast majority of our fleet, that we'd be better suited by getting away from a lease program.
Well, we've been at this discussion a while, so.
One last question, and this may be money that's not even touchable. But I know that, um, we were trying to raise one point five million dollars for the fire station. And I thought we had raised significantly more, significantly more than that.
Yep, that is for the fire station, so it's been given to a, it, it's not city money.
Well, the fire station was given a check for one point five today. I thought we'd raised one point eight.
And there are other obligations.
So Nicola, in answer to my question a minute ago, would you say number two was the, the better option if we were to borrow more?
Uh, well, I think wanting to make sure that we qualified for expenditure restraint and didn't, uh, didn't. We, we do have some future, um, flexibility on, on meeting expenditure restraint for, say, twenty twenty-seven uh, by moving another program. So we're already moving two programs out of the general fund. But it's, we can't move a half a program. It's all or nothing. So if we needed an extra ten thousand of, of space and we had to move a hundred and fifty thousand of savings, you know, to make expenditure restraint, we've sort of wasted a hundred and forty thousand dollars of flexibility. And I'm just not quite sure exactly where we are. We do have another, um, option or, um, some flexibility from the debt issue and how we allocate the premium. So we've got some, some pieces on the chessboard right now, but I would, I would have to go with option two. While I don't want to solve our financial challenges by just borrowing more, I do think that, that it would, it would be helpful in making sure that we meet expenditure restraint and, and don't have to use up another, um, opportunity for a future budget in, in moving a program out of the general fund.
And so that will mean that our, that we have, uh, our, our general borrow this year, if we followed our council directive, would be one point three, right?
Yes.
It would be one point three and already we're at.
Talking about twenty twenty-six, right?
For the next year.
Yeah.
That's the amount we're paying off. So we have this kind of thing that Brian mentioned, that we try not to borrow any more than we're paying off this year, which is about one point.
Yes, ma'am.
Three.
Yes.
And we're already exceeding that by one point one, so we're already one entry and we're exceeding it by another one point one for a new fire engine.
Correct.
So we're already exceeding that by one point one, and now we're talking about adding additional.
I, uh, I'm, I'm reluctant to add. I, I would rather move things around in the CIP than, uh, than add more debt.
We're already one point one million above and we were at one point three, and we're almost.
I, I didn't understand, we had, we were in that, we were that deep in. So the option one would be, I'm sorry, but.
That would still be borrowing. So one and two are borrowing, three is moving something around to, to make it possible for the museum to do their, uh.
Madam President, I apologize for the correction. Option one was to increase the levy.
The levy.
Right, which is, well, which would increase tax.
Yes, right.
And it would utilize more of the debt service adjustment in, um, in going over the levy limit. I think that's what you were referencing.
Right.
Just don't think we can really piecemeal the installation project by going twenty, twenty, twenties. So I think we do have to do that.
So if something happens to the car because we took the money from it, then they have a plan with the contingency. He'll have to get a fifty thousand dollar vote.
Ball, ball?
I'm just, I'm trying to work. No, I'm, no, I'm just saying, because I, I just think his pla- his project has been on the board for a long time, too. Um, and I feel, I empathize with that, I don't want, you know, but I, that museum to me is, is priceless. If we lose that stuff, we might as well stop talking about having it, right? We might as well stop bragging about, anyway.
But it's important to recognize, um, that none of the CIP requests are frivolous in nature. They're all valid, valuable projects.
Nobody said anything.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just endorsing that myself. Sometimes I feel like I'm sitting in the, the bad person's seat, so.
Could, could we make it a, we could, could we make a motion that says, uh, we endorse uh, the eighty-five thousand from the CIP, keeping it at this current rate? And, uh, if you can find a different CIP project or two CIP projects, I don't care.
Um, no.
You want us to?
Number two, we, uh, we're going to have conversations on who we asked and we're going to have conversations on it. It'll be important to.
I was just trying to. I.
Don't know until you, till you try.
I, I have something totally different, maybe. Um, we just approved the, the general obligation notes. And I see for the pool, six point nine, pool, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That was the two twenty-five from the year before.
Right.
But, and the six.
The bids came in under.
We've already accepted the projects now, uh, to utilize those.
Is there?
No, the, no, it's, it's.
No. But there's, if, if the agreement was to borrow up to six point nine, it's my understanding that we approve bids that came in under that. The fundraising raised additional.
We actually.
Have that taken?
We authorized it. Um, the motion we had, um, last meeting was to allow Epic to contract with Portson for the base project and all alters, which actually I think takes us eighty thousand dollars over what we have. Uh, so the gap fill right now is eighty thousand dollars of, of splash money. And then conversations then on additional potential amenities, repairs that can be done to that facility and working with our partners. So we, we've exceeded, uh, we've, we've spent that money.
That's pretty much, that's pretty much, we ain't got a lot. We can move on to the pool.
Sorry, I'm confused about this, but I know you said if we were to add eighty-five thousand dollars to the promissory note, that was taking us over, um, I mean, we're already one point one million dollars over the, the general fund borrowing. Is, that's correct?
Yes, so the.
Point three, and we're already close to like two point four or something.
Correct.
Now, would borrowing for that, um, adding the additional CIP tax levy have that same implication?
And that's different implications. There's implications for both, so the, a- as we increase the amount we're borrowing, we're, we're, we're moving towards the state and city cap on our total amount of debt that can be outstanding. So you'll, you'll remember in the, in the projections, we're, we're going to be at eighty percent of the city self-imposed, three and a half percent of equalized value. So that's, that's like total outstanding debt. Um, if we, and then of course, that, that also generates, um, principal and interest payments that we'll have to make in the future. Uh, as far as if we add it to the levy, that's, that's increasing taxes. Um, and it's also increasing, um, or accelerating how quickly we will meet levy limits and use up all our debt service adjustment.
And we were close to like fifty-seven percent of the state's levy limit.
No, that's, that's the borrowing.
The borrowing, fifty-seven.
This is a different, this is a different.
We're like eighty percent of our, like, three point five.
Yes.
And, but what percentage were we of the state's five? Around fifty-seven?
I, I believe you're right. I, I have, see if I still have that open, um.
I think it was, it was around fifty-seven, high fifties, I think, fifty-seven. So I, I guess I would opt for option one. I mean, that's an important vehicle to get to emergencies and it's a hard hundred and forty-four thousand miles. And got to get that museum done. And then maybe we just look at different things next.
So when you said option one, you mean adding it to the tax dollar levy?
Levy.
To the levy, okay.
Yeah.
So that would, that would, something we would have to think about is expenditure restraint, um, qualifying for that and, um, you know, the increase in the tax rate and so on, yeah.
And by adding it to the tax levy, it gets paid in one year?
Yes.
When Brian's saying something like the first year paying back of the, that GEO note was a lot lower impact than the following year. I was thinking.
It depends how we apply the premium. Um, now, staff recommendation is actually to, to push some of that debt premium or offset into twenty twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Um, we, we have mostly established the twenty twenty-six budget, except for this potentially last piece. Um, plus we have insurance renewal, so that might change things a little bit. Uh, so there is some flexibility there. Um, but I would recommend, from my seat, I would recommend that it, as inflation is at about three percent from year to year currently in the, in, in, in the nation, that, that our tax rate increase benchmark against that. So in other words, it doesn't make sense to me that we would have a zero percent tax rate increase in a year where inflation is at three percent. So my recommendation is that we, we utilize that offset against next year's interest payment. Uh, we would push that out further so that we would maintain a tax rate increase of roughly three percent. So that will change a little bit what the numbers that Brian showed you for how that premium was applied and it would push it out to a later year. But I would say this, and I'm, I'm thinking on my feet, so, uh, you know, the, the, I could potentially have to bring this back to the council, but, but I would certainly not want to lose expenditure restraint. I'll never mind cancel that because it, that's only related to debt service and debt service doesn't impact expenditure restraint, so just scratch that last half a thought.
Well, folks? We can sit here for another twenty minutes or we can.
Hey, I, I motioned that we, I'm going off the top of my head, that we fund the project with the additional CIP tax levy of sixty-five thousand from eight hundred and five. Oh, that's a lot. Uh, okay, from eight hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty to eight, seven, oh, three hundred and thirty. So we go on with the tax levy.
I'll second.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Lynn has made a motion, we fund this project at the museum, uh, with an additional sixty-five thousand in CIP tax levy. There's twenty thousand there already. Uh, I would say we fund up to eighty-five, and if it's not eighty-five, um, uh, we would fund less and that would increase the CIP tax levy from eight hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand to eight hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, in light of that motion and second, uh, my concern is about expenditure restraint. And I'm just wondering what the thought would be if we add that to the tax levy and if that puts us over, so we would not qualify for expenditure restraint. I could propose moving a different program that was larger, uh, out of the general fund. So, you know, this is all hypothetical when we're doing a budget, so until it's adopted. So we had talked about moving the ambulance service out and, um, the buil- uh, building inspection service out.
Right.
Um, but if this action put us over, then I could put one of those back in and try to take, find something else that was bigger that would cover, cover that. Um, just wondering if that's council direction or if you would want me to bring this back and say, if we do this, we won't qualify for expenditure restraint. I'm just looking for some direction there.
I think we want to continue to qualify for expenditure restraint. So I think we want to, uh, add this to the tax levy and give the Department of Administration the flexibility to assure that we, uh, continue to qualify for expenditure restraint. And if we don't, that you, uh, bring that back to the first meeting in November so that we can, again, make an adjustment.
Thank you, Nicola, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's good, so.
Okay, so we had a motion by Lynn and a second by Bob. Does everybody understand the motion? The motion is to add another sixty-five thousand dollars to the tax levy. The motion is to add another sixty five thousand dollars to the tax levy. That would be actually that sixty five and then another four thousand from an earlier. So it's actually a sixty nine thousand dollar addition to the tax levy. Um, uh. This to fund uh up to eighty five thousand dollars for the attic insulation project at the museum. We'll vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
No.
Pop?
Pardon? Did you? Yes.
Heret?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you all. And Nicola, we'll hear from you in November. Uh, i- if there's an issue or before then, if you have to. I mean, you know, you can put it in, you know, just let us know. Let us know if if we did okay. And then just say thumbs up, you did okay. Or guess what? You're going to have to have a discussion in November. Okay?
Appreciate the very thoughtful discussion.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, these are auditing services for the years ending December thirty one of twenty twenty five. That'd be this year, right? Twenty six and twenty seven with two optional additional years. Uh, that would be twenty eight and twenty nine. So this is for audit services. Nicola?
Yes, so the 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 audit takes place um after the year ends. So that's why it's for twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Uh, so we've talked about this before um a couple of times. So essentially, we did go out to RFP for auditing services. Uh, we evaluated the the um proposals that we received. Uh, we made a recommendation based on a criteria matrix uh from scores from myself, city manager and the accounting and finance manager. Uh, those are provided to you in the packet. Staff recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Johnson Block to continue with them for auditing services uh for the years twenty twenty five through twenty seven with two additional optional years.
Questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Johnson Black and Company Incorporated to conduct auditing services for the fiscal years ending December thirty one, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven with optional years twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Kathy. We'll vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Heret?
Yes.
McFall? Dos? Yes. Motion carries. Next agenda item, friend of the museum's application for a non-state grant.
Madam President, the Friends of the Mining Norala Jameson Museum are seeking authorization from the common council to apply for funding through the Wisconsin non-state grant program administered by the Department of Administration. This is something you're familiar with is we had discussions in this in regards to the heated uh parks garage. Uh, this grant supports capital infrastructure projects that serve a statewide public purpose. Uh, if awarded, the friends intend to undertake a capital improvement project focused on the Hanmar Robinson Building. Uh, proposed improvements include redesign of the building's landscape and entryway, renovation of the museum shop and reconfiguration of office spaces. Prior to submitting the grant application, the friends are requesting authorization for the proposed improvements, approval for the city manager and council president to release a letter of support as attached and drafted in your packet, and then inclusion of this project in the city's capital improvement plan as a shelved item pending potential funding through the grant and donation match. Additional notes, the Hanmar Robinson Building is not listed on the local historic registry, so there's no local historic preservation action that is required. There's no compliant uh plan commission review uh is necessary for this proposed improvements. Uh, it's important note that if awarded and accepted, the grant requires a twenty year land use restriction agreement uh recorded with the county register of deeds as part of the state's retained ownership interest. The budget impacts, there is no financial impacts to the city. The Friends of the Museum will meet the required fifty percent local match using their own funds, uh, which will be donated to the city of Plattville for the purposes of this project. Recommendation is staff is recommending support of the initiative with understanding of the possible grant requirements as we had talked about. Um, you'll see a sample affirmative motion language there in a copy of the letter, and I believe our own uh Friends president has graciously waited for us through many discussions and presentations tonight, Madam President.
Hey, Deb, would you like to uh make comments?
I was kind of afraid to admit who I was after all that. I do have some. I guess you'll have to introduce yourself first. Yes.
Um, I'm Deb Jenny, one one two Pine Grove, and I am the president of the Friends of the Mining and Rolla Jameson Museum. Sorry. Um, I'm just uh showing you some pictures. The front picture is the elevation of the current museum. Um, uh, many of you will remember that a few years ago, there was a master plan developed um that showed not just the infrastructure that needs help, like the furnace and air conditioning, but also a lot of improvements that would bring um more people and more revenue into the museum. Uh, the friends then had a feasibility study done by Ambridge and came up with ways that we could get more people in the door and uh it uh, the cost was much more than with everything else going on in Platteville that they felt that we could we could raise. So the friends decided on a phased um plan. And uh, so they sat down and came up with some some priorities. The front page shows the outside of the front of the museum and the present uh elevations. The second page shows a courtyard that we're proposing to put in front with a new uh vestibule entering the museum that leads into a redesigned store that will allow the staff to put in um more and better items for sale. And it also leads to a hallway that goes straight out the back that leads to the to the mine and the train. Um, what that allows is um now when people come back from the mine, which is the last item on the tour, they come back through the East Gallery and they kind of slip out the front door and they don't have to go back through the store. And in most museums that that you've been to, you always have to go through the store. You have to buy something. So um this way they will have to, they will be going through the store and uh we're hoping that that increases the revenue. It should. Um, and please note that the revenue stays with the museum. It does not come back with the friend to the friends at all. That's not our revenue. Then in the front, there's also an ADA accessible um in plans for making more access to the back of the museum and having Cody be able to use it for more um educational activities. We um included an ADA sidewalk that will join the sidewalk that goes between the two buildings. There is, there has been money donated to remodel um part of the main floor of the Rock School. Eventually, we'll get to that. Um, but this will allow people to come from the back of the building to the front of the building, which is the entry where people have to come in and pay. So right now you cannot get from the back of the building to the front of the building on a paved sidewalk. You have to go on grass all the way around the Hanmar Robbins Building. So those were the priorities that we came with. It allows people to say, hey, there's something going on in the museum. Cody's making new exhibits. We're trying to upgrade the store. We're trying to make it welcoming. We're trying to make it more accessible and hoping to improve the revenue. And we have more priorities hopefully coming later, but the grant program came up. We were able to get Kramer Brothers to help us develop the plan and come up with a budget. Um, we had the store budget already. Um, and we're hoping that you'll uh allow us to move forward.
What is your budget for this project?
Just under seven hundred thousand.
He says there's no financial impact to the city. We're just saying we support them getting out going after the money.
I mean, that there's no financial contribution.
Right.
Right.
So we will be doing fundraising.
So the grant is seven hundred thousand and you can guarantee you're fifty percent of three hundred and fifty K.
But we will be doing a fundraising program because obviously we don't want to use all our resources. We still have our obligation to the city for the for the um funds that we give you for museum expenses and other things that we're doing. So we will be, we will be doing fundraising. But we do have proof of funds.
All right, Deb. What what kind of a timeline if you receive this?
The grant has to be in by the end of the week. Nothing like cutting it short. Um, they review it kind of over this winter. They um give the grants out in the spring. We, of course, wouldn't be able to do any construction until the museum was closed the end of next year, the end of October. And it will take about twelve weeks for Kramer and everybody to get done. Toby, next winner.
Okay, so I just I just have to ask the question. Could that attic be added to that?
We don't have enough funds to cover any more expenses to show the fifty percent match.
I guess I ju- what we've been hearing is that's the priority. So.
I think there's probably a a difference in priorities relative to to facility in terms of facility um maintenance. I would call the eighty five thousand dollars for a insulation, a maintenance project. The museum can stay open if this grant isn't funded. I mean, and so it's not a maintenance project. It's more of a improvement or whatever you would call it. Uh, so I I think they kind of have different they're kind of rooted in different um needs.
Friends, we're looking at increasing revenue.
Right.
Uh, I do. I I know that I had asked uh about the twenty year land use restriction agreement. Joe, does that not have to go to the plan commission if we put a twenty year land use restriction agreement on something? I mean, it's city-owned property.
I I don't know the answer to that question, I guess. I've never encountered that before.
I mean, this thing requires that if it's awarded and accepted and and Clint, in your letter, you say you're willing to to sign that. I I don't I think in your letter, did did it say that?
So the letter of.
The letter, the city has committed to signing.
A land use restriction agreement if the project is funded, which is why I think it's very important that you folks recognize that and have the conversation tonight.
Well, I I I don't know if we can actually do that without plan commission. I I don't know. Have we researched how that permission would be? I don't know if we can commit to that without.
And that no plan commission review is necessary.
No plan commissions review is necessary for the for the addition evidently to the building. That's what you, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that would be correct. And there's also a question about the historic preservation commission. They would also.
There's an evidently review needed for this picture on page number two. But I mean, the land use restriction agreement is different than than this construction. I mean, I don't have a problem with the letter, except for this particular sentence that says that we're committed to signing this when we don't actually know what the procedure is that we need to follow in order to be able to sign it.
So we just entered into grant with the DNR for trail acquisition through stewardship grant. Joe, did we have, did plan commission, were they involved?
They had previously uh uh agreed to the the project, the grant project. Um, uh, so it it the I I know purchase of property, selling of property has to go to the plan commission, but I don't believe it says anything about a land use restriction. I I've never encountered that. That's something that has to go to the plan.
But you don't know that it doesn't. It's just it's something we've never encountered before. So we would really need to research to see what's required to be able to, I mean, I hate for us to put that in there and then for some reason, we can't.
That component of it too would be on grant acceptance. So tonight we'd be.
My understanding it does have to go in with the grant that there's no objection. So I believe if you don't agree to it, we cannot submit the grant. Um, I was under the understanding that that was not going to be a problem, but I can't remember who told me that. Do you remember?
I would have told you that in our conversations and it was in the context of, yeah, we're not doing a land acquisition or a land sale.
I I don't think it was directly with me. Cody, do you remember?
I don't know if that was in conversations with our grant writer.
I don't remember.
I I don't, I mean, I I just want us to have the right procedure. I mean, I don't want us to say we're committed to it and then you know, not be able to fulfill a commitment because we haven't done the right A, B, or C. I don't, I don't know what that takes. That's my question. Pardon?
Wouldn't the council be the one to make that decision though?
Don't know.
I'm just assuming. I mean, we make decisions for pretty much everything else. The land use uh.
I I don't know. If if Tony, it might, if we do that, it may have, it may say someplace that we have to have a public hearing and announce it. I I don't know. We have public hearings sometimes and we have no public here, but we have to have a public hearing for some reason. So I'm just I'm just worried about the process, not so much
Yeah, I hear.
The the commitment. Because I don't think we have any plan to sell it to for any reason or anything. So I don't think that's the issue.
My thought is.
What's what kind of procedure?
Do we have a copy of the land use agreement that we would sign?
So, under the grant explanation, uh, this is under accountability. The state will retain an ownership interest in the project equivalent to the grant amount to ensure it fulfills its public purpose. As such, if a grant-funded project deviates from its public purpose, the amount can be recouped. To implement this, the ownership interest will take the form of a warranty deed and a twenty year land use restriction agreement will be recorded with the county register of deeds.
So what I'm hearing is that if we get the grant to re ref- refurbish the front of the museum and we don't do it. Right, that's what.
It it has to be a warranty deed.
Now, I it from what I heard, they're they're saying if you sell the property.
Yeah.
And then they, then you have to give them the a share of the proceeds in order to recoup what have you and within the twenty year period. So as long as we're going to guarantee that that this will for the next twenty years, we're not going to sell the property, it sounds to me like it's not an issue.
And we would have to record it with the registered deeds. Is that what it says?
That's correct.
So the question is, what?
So the if we have to register deed.
We would own it. It just is, it goes as a, it goes as a.
It would, it would be a lien on the property.
A deed restriction on on our.
On our property.
So it's a deed restriction. It, we're not selling it or anything, but we would have to guarantee. Does that have to be done prior to this grant?
No, it has your agreement to sign it or to sign the deed would has to go in with the grant so that they know that you're willing to do it if we get the grant. I mean, we may not get the grant.
Ordered and accepted. Then it's required. So I think we can just move ahead.
And and I'm looking at the.
Put in the motion that we will authora- I I mean, the motion, current motion doesn't talk about any uh guarantee committed to signing the land use restriction. uh, guarantee committed to signing the land use restriction ag- agreement. I think that that should be part of the motion so that there's no question later if somebody comes back. I think that has to be part of the motion. So it would have to say, uh, motion to approve the Friends' request to pursue this grant program for improvements to authorize proposed improvements. Uh, and, uh, to author, you know, authorize the city manager to re- lease a letter of support on behalf of the council noting that we are committed to signing the land use restriction agreement. I think it should be part of the motion.
Okay, I make a motion, uh, to approve the Friends of, of the museum requests to pursue the Wisconsin Non-State Grant Program for improvements to the Hammer Robbins Building to authorize the proposed improvements to include the project in the city capital improvement plan as a shelved item and to authorize the city manager to release a letter of support on behalf of the city and with the intention to sign the land use agree, the twenty-year land use agreement as required.
Restriction agreement.
Restriction agreement, thank you.
Uh, and, and did you want to authorize the proposed improvements at no cost to the city?
At no cost to the city.
I'll second.
So did you get that, Colette? We added, uh, authorize the proposed improvements at no cost to the city. And then at the end, uh, the caveat about the land use restriction agreement.
Right.
Yep. Okay, Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, on to the next item, which I believe is, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen. This is the Mountview Park Connector Trail Phase Two TAP, which is Transportation Alternative Program Grant.
Yes.
Howard?
Thank you. Uh, back in August, the council voted to, uh, direct staff to prepare and submit this, uh, Transportation Alternatives Program Grant to the DOT for our phase two portion of the trail project. This would continue the, uh, trail project from Mitchell Hollow Road up to Broadway County B with the exception of the bridge just directly north of Mitchell Hollow Road. Uh, the DOT requires a resolution that you approve the submission of the grant. Um, the DOT grant is an eighty-twenty grant. Resolution says the city is responsible for the twenty percent match. As we've done with phase one, we also intend to submit a grant request this spring to the Wisconsin DNR to be that twenty percent match. Uh, this would be in calendar year twenty twenty-eight or later. If we are o- only awarded one grant, we may decline that grant if we can't get both of them to match. So I'm recommending that you approve the resolution as submitted.
Okay, uh, we had talked about this, uh, project, uh, that would continue the trail from, um, Mountview Road basically to County B. And in earlier discussions, so this is authorizing, uh, the submission of an application for a grant. Questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen, authorizing the city manager to submit an application for the twenty twenty-five Transportation Alternative Program Grant um, cycle for Mountview Park Trail Connector Phase Two.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Kathy to approve Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen. Uh, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that's the end of our action items. We have one, uh, uh, information item. This would be Contract nine dash twenty-five, snow and ice removal. Howard?
I hope we don't need it for a while yet, but, uh, our ordinance requires property owners to remove snow and ice from public sidewalks. If they fail to do so, uh, the city is authorized to remove the snow and ice and bill it to the owner plus an administrative fee. We've, uh, requested bids. This year we received one bid from Home and Lawn Care and Snow Removal. The bid is one hundred and fifty dollars per sidewalk regardless of length for snow removal only and an additional charge of fifty dollars above the basic charge if the contractor needs to salt and scrape the sidewalk. There's a sixty-dollar administrative fee per our administrative fee schedule. So that would mean that a property owner would be charged two hundred and ten for snow only or, or, uh, uh, two hundred and sixty, sorry, uh, for snow and ice. Uh, but it is less than last year's price, so.
Questions on the, uh, contract? Otherwise it would be moved to the, uh, November agenda for action. Again, we contract this. I know the last year it was like, the city's getting rich off this. The city is not getting rich off this because it's actually being paid to a contractor. So um, and by contract, so. Uh, the best option here is to shovel your own sidewalk. It's the best option or to, to find somebody who can. All right, uh, that would be the end of the, um, agenda items, uh, action and information. We do have a closed session schedule, uh, closed session scheduled per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any imp- public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is our annual city manager evaluation. Do I have a, um, a motion to go to closed session? Who?
Go ahead.
Okay?
Make a motion and we go to closed session.
Steve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Kathy's got it.
Uh, Kathy has the second. Uh, Colette, you look confused back there. No. Gates?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.